The July 26, 2011 meeting of the Newport Beach City Council to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right. We will take public comment on the 9th, 2011 meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Very good. Do we have a closed session report?
We do. Mr. Mayor, the council met in closed session to consider the matters reflected under Roman numeral two on their open session agenda. There is no reportable action with respect to any matter except the following. Number five, or A5, Wedgeworth versus City of Newport Beach. On a vote of seven to zero, the city council authorized the defense of that matter. With respect to B1, related to Morningside Recovery's compliance with the zoning code and the zoning agreement, the city council authorized the office of the city attorney to initiate code enforcement action regarding the Lido Marina Village properties operated by Morningside, that being 3404 A and B via Lido and 3430 via Lido, to bring them into full compliance with our code and to bring in nuisance abatement actions if they are not in full compliance within 30 days of today's date. As to B2, related to Pacific Shores Recovery's operation at 3309 Clay, on a vote of seven to zero, the city council authorized the office of city attorney to initiate code enforcement action against 3309 of Pacific Shores and bring it into full compliance with our code. Forgive me, as to the Morningside vote, that was seven to zero. With respect to B3, and that's the potential litigation against Yellowstone Recovery or Woman's First Step House, on a vote of seven to zero, the city council authorized the office of the city attorney to initiate code enforcement action against Yellowstone and to abate their uses and bring them into full compliance with our code at 1621 Industry Street, 1561 Industry Street, 20172 Redlands Drive, and 571 Pegasus. That was a seven to zero vote, and no other reportable action was taken.
Thank you very much. We'll proceed to the pledge of allegiance by council member Hill and then the invocation by Reverend Carl Stuckenberg of the Newport Center United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for those.
How do you join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Loving God, we give you thanks for this day and thanks for the men and women who serve this community. As they gather tonight, may your love and your compassion guide them, and may all we do as citizens work towards your vision for this world. Remind us that you created us to serve one another, to seek a common good, and to see beyond our differences.
Thank you, Reverend Stuckenberg. We have no presentations this evening, so we'll proceed to the notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
All right. As to council announcements, council member Daigle.
Yes, as you may be aware, the city's been doing some contracting out, and recent examples of that are parking meter management and street sweeping. And recently, a Chinese-American councilman for one of the L... contracting out services. And so our staff prepared an excellent presentation based on those case studies. And the Chinese came to the Santa Ana Heights Fire Station, of course, very interested in all the details. And so I want to thank the staff for putting that together. It was an outstanding program. And I think for the council, what these efficiencies really do in terms of outcomes is when I was at the senior center on Friday, I was able to report to our seniors that not only has the city balanced its budget, but we have also expanded services at Oasis. We have maintained our library hours, and we've put three more police officers in the street. So that's really what it's all about for our residents, is the city achieving these costs and operational efficiencies so we can continue to deliver our high-quality services. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council member Curry.
No items tonight.
And council member Selich.
I have none.
And council member Hill.
None.
Council member Rosansky.
None, thank you.
Mayor Protem Gardner.
Yes, I have a question for council. The Bicycle Safety Task Force identified a number of areas where the automobile-bicycle interaction could be improved. And now the Bicycle Safety Committee has suggested several of those, which staff has taken, and created a plan, and we have budget, money budget to do it this fall. My question is, do you want to do a study session presentation on these intersections, or you just want to wait till it comes to council and review it then after, when we do the contracts? Is there a burning desire to see the stripes on the ground?
Any council member Daigle?
We'll trust your judgment, speaking for myself.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Very good. This is the, we will not be having a council meeting, and the second meeting in August, and so it'll be a month before we get together. I have a few announcements that I just want to draw people's attention to in that intervening time. Actually, one that just occurred, and that is the grand opening of the new Chase Bank branch at the Landmark Shopping Center here on the peninsula. That's the newly remodeled Landmark Shopping Center. This is the second Chase branch to be opened in Newport Beach, and my understanding is they've got at least a couple of more on the line. They built a beautiful new facility here, and we're very, very pleased to see that investment in our city and the creation of jobs in our city as a part of the revitalization of the peninsula. Then we do have a meeting of the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee on Thursday, August the 11th, that's this coming Thursday, from 4:00 to 5:30 in the council chambers. We have a meeting of our July 4th committee. That's the committee that helps staff understand how we need to strategize and organize our dealings with the Fourth of July celebrations here on the peninsula. This is a wrap-up meeting from the festivities this past July 4th. That's on Monday, August the 15th, from 4:30 to 6:00 o'clock, once again here in council chambers. The Santa Ana Heights Citizens Advisory Panel, this is the one dealing with planning for potential changes in landscaping along Bristol South, will be meeting on Wednesday, August the 17th, from 3:15 to approximately 4:45 at the Santa Ana Heights Fire Station. Would be glad to invite all members of the public that have an interest in that to attend. The Tidlins Management Committee is meeting on Wednesday, August the 17th, that same day, from 4:00 to 5:30 over at Oasis. We always have challenging and interesting agenda items at that committee, and so, again, invite all members of the public to attend. The Balboa Village Citizens Advisory Panel is meeting on Tuesday, August the 23rd, from 4:00 to 5:30 at the Nautical Museum down in Balboa Village. This will be the inaugural meeting of that Citizens Advisory Panel, where we will be exploring a new vision for the Balboa Village and solutions for parking requirements there. You might see a theme here. We are very actively pursuing revitalization across four or five initiatives here in the city, and this is part of the main priorities that council adopted in February. And then lastly, we will be having a special session of the Newport Beach City Council tomorrow at August the 10th at 2:30 PM, and for the purpose of discussing instructions regarding labor negotiations for our upcoming round of negotiations with our public safety associations. And that's all I have. So with that, we will move on to consent calendar.
All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 11, are considered by council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Council member Hill, do you have any items to pull?
I do not.
Council member Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
None.
Council member Daigle?
I have no items to pull, but I did want to comment on number 11. I believe that's the letter to the Costa Mesa City Council, excuse me, Costa Mesa Planning Commission from the mayor. And that's an outgrowth of a decision by the Airport Land Use Commission where Newport Beach, did you want to pull it? This one?
No.
Okay. Where Newport Beach had voted against a project, and Costa Mesa and the others representatives on the commission had voted for it. And so coming back and talking to my colleagues in the council, it's something that we very much opposed and got involved and spoke with Costa Mesa. So as a result of this advocacy, last evening, the Costa Mesa Planning Commission did deny the project by a three-to-one vote. So, thank you.
Very good. Council member Curry?
No items to pull. I did ask for this item 11 on the Hillipad, and I'm glad to see the appropriate action was taken by Costa Mesa.
Very good. Council member Selich?
I have no items.
And I have no items. Are there any members of the public that wish to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing no one, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just need to clarify one consent calendar item. It's number six. There were, number six, it relates to 412 Carnation Avenue. There are just a couple of modifications that are really clerical in nature in the actual document that I'd like to make clear that the council's aware of. The first falls at the first page, and it's a change of the APN. There's been a lot-line change, and therefore the APN needs to be changed to 938-016-50. And then on the quitclaim deed, which is the attachment to the agreement, there are two changes. One changes the name of the granting language. It goes from grants to quitclaims, which is a technical legal term, and it adds the language that was added into the text of the document itself by stating it's being quitclaimed to the parcel as their interests appear in the revised condominium plan recorded on April 9, 2010 as an instrument number 20100016317 in the official records of Orange County Clerk Recorder. Those are the only changes, and my apologies for having to bring that up.
Move items 1 through 11 and number six with the modifications discussed by the city attorney.
Second. Motion and a second. Please vote.
You wanted to see if the public wants to pull any of those, I imagine.
We did.
Sorry, just a, I'm step behind. Bob.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the title for item number three, ordinance number 2011-20 for adoption, "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach Terminating Development Agreement Number 2010-001: Zoning Implementation and Public Benefit Agreement Between the City of Newport Beach and Morningside Recovery LLC." With that, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Dave, would you like me to slow down a little bit?
Just surprised that no one pulled anything.
Okay. All right. Having dealt with consent.
Mr. Mayor, I think the woman in the back wants to speak on something, but...
Well, actually, it's past time, but please come on down anyway. We'll be happy to accept your comment. Recognizing we've already voted.
Hi, good evening. My name is Peggy Heidel. I'm the property owner at 414 Carnation, directly next door to 412 Carnation. I was not noticed and I was not aware of this vote until about 4:00 today, when I read it in Corona Del Mar Today's blog and I saw a picture. This directly impacts my property, and I sent some emails out as soon as I read it this afternoon asking for a postponement on this vote so I can review this. It's got some huge impact on my property again, and I really wanted the opportunity to go through it. And possibly if the property was for sale, I'd be interested in buying it rather than sell it to the homeowner, if there was an opportunity.
Okay. Well, we have already actually voted on this item, but I would suggest that we ask the city manager to put someone in contact with you to review your concerns.
Okay.
And see if there are any avenues of help that might be available.
Okay, I appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. We're done with the consent calendar then, and it's time for public comments on non-agenda items. Does anyone wish to make a comment on a non-agenda item? Please come on down.
My name is Barbara Peters. I live at 318 Breakers Drive, Corona Del Mar. Honorable mayor, members of the city council, when someone makes an honest mistake and realizes it, they should do what's responsible and fair, right? Last November, Jim Campbell issued a director determination to accommodate the remodel at 3002 Breakers Drive. This administrative process, single-handedly overruled a prior city council ordinance that promised any new development would be subject to code setbacks, thereby offering light space and air to the neighbors. It also said that the lot is much smaller than it really is. There was no public notice, so when we learned of it, the appeal period had long expired. Before the determination, the official average lot width was close to 50 feet. Why then, we wondered, did Mr. Campbell think it was less than 30 feet? The smaller lot size matters because it allowed the owner to design a larger third floor. On July 27th, we showed Jim Campbell and Kim Brandt the official measurement of 48 and 1/2 feet, and they took a closer look. It appears it was an honest mistake. Jim said he wished he had seen it before he did his determination. He pulled out the current code section to measure the unusually shaped, to measure unusually shaped lots, and candidly agreed that the lot is considerably larger than 30 feet. Ms. Brandt went back to the homeowner to discuss a compromise of making the third floor smaller. A week later, expecting to hear some word of compromise, instead, we hear from Kim that the city attorney has looked at it. They are suddenly of the opinion that the single earlier determination was really two. This legal maneuvering is probably because they realized the original determination relied on a code section that applied only to setbacks. By saying retroactively that it is two, they can use a different code section to say that the director has the authority to interpret the lot size. It doesn't seem to matter if he may have misinterpreted the lot size by about 40 percent. It doesn't seem to matter that while we can't appeal after 14 days, after 10 months, the city can still change the determination to justify the position. What about the space, light, and air we were granted by city ordinance? I thought ordinances were the most binding and permanent type of council action that could only be repealed by a subsequent ordinance. Of course, there is a cost to asking the owner to redesign the third floor. That issue is eclipsed by how we see the city handling this. Doesn't the city have the responsibility and obligation to be sure buildings are truly to code, even if the legal department can figure out a way to say a 50-foot lot is only a 30-foot lot? We've appealed to Planning Commissioner Michael Torch. His words keep ringing in my ears. He wonders, as we all should, what kind of community development director does Ms. Brandt really want to be? One that does the right thing, the ethical thing? The final permit is due to be issued any day, and I implore you to review this matter before the permit is issued.
Thank you. Did anyone wish to comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just briefly, at least from the perspective of the office of the city attorney, I appreciate Ms. Peters' comments, but in fact, we were never involved in anything like this. We didn't instruct anybody to do anything on this. I don't know how she got the idea that that was the case. I did talk to Ms. Brandt, the community development director, about what occurred, and she indicated there were, in fact, I just did that today, she indicated there were, in fact, two determinations, directed determinations that were made prior to her becoming the community development director. They were made fully in compliance with their ordinance, which I agree, from looking at it, based upon the interpretation's power of your community development director and clarity needed with respect to these issues, that the actions taken by the then-acting community development director, Jim Campbell, were consistent with the ordinance and were appropriate exercises of a director determination. Our office was not otherwise involved in it except for to review a letter that was drafted by former Ms. Brandt, just clarifying the situation. So I don't know what Ms. Peters gets that idea. But as far as our review of the situation, what I learned about it today is the action by Ms. Brandt was totally appropriate, as was the action by Mr. Campbell when he was acting community development director.
Have you had enough time, given the lateness that this came up, to feel confident in that determination?
I feel comfortable in that determination. I'm comfortable with that conclusion. And having worked on it with Ms. Brandt and having worked on it with Ms. Mulvihill and taken a look at the issues, I am. I'm comfortable in that conclusion.
Okay. Anybody else have any comment on this? All right. Thank you. Other matters of public comment? Anyone else wish to make a public comment on non-agenda items?
I'll show you the better camera angle.
Well, Tim Stokes and Gloria Alchire are here to present an invitation to you and a compliment. So we are both on the Board of Directors for Airfair, and we're planning an event on September 15th from 5:00 to 7:30, and we have a flyer that we'd like to pass out and also for community members that are watching our show tonight, your show tonight, our community council meeting. We would like to invite members also for our event. For those who don't know what Airfair is, Airfair is a community-based organization made up of volunteers from our community who monitor airport noise and pollution and try to continue to work in many different ways to inform people about the airport and its impacts, positive and sometimes not-so-positive things that go on, and to continue to work with the city in concert on keeping the airport at its present caps and also watching for noise pollution and things like that. We also want to thank the council for the number of times that when we ask you to come and talk to us about things that are going on in the city relevant to the airport, you do. You give generously of your time, not only for our group, but also many groups that sometimes I get to attend that I see you at, and I, you are truly a council that continues to work throughout our community when asked, and we thank you for that. And so we have, Tim?
Tim Stokes, I'd just like to further tell you what our fundraiser's about. Is, Airfair's mission is to educate and to community activate people in our community against the airport expansion. And Leslie, we'd like to personally thank you tonight for your stewardship for the Airport Land Use Commission and bringing to a breast the memorandum of agreement that we don't really want the physical expansion of the airport. So thank you so much from Airfair. That's a big, big, big...
And while we know you're really busy, if you can attend, it's appreciated, but if not, we also truly understand, because when we call, you come. Thank you.
The event is taking place at the Newport Beach Winery, I just noticed.
Okay, good. Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
I would just like to add that Airfair, I think, is performing as a very responsible part of our citizens groups that are working to extend the JWA settlement agreement, and I think that that is probably one of the most impactful things on our quality of life that all of Newport Beach residents share. And so we'd like to thank Airfair for the continued effort and work that they do of being part of the team.
Do we have anyone else that would like to make a public comment?
Good evening. I'm Nancy Moran Sanchez. I live in Corona Del Mar. I'm speaking as a private citizen. It's just a coincidence that I happen to be a CERT member. Mr. City Manager, thank you for preserving our fire suspension, suppression, and EMS services and our strong community preparedness CERT team. I feel proud and satisfied that the value of CERT is highlighted in the budget report for all to see. Our members will continue to strive to activate the CERT proposed, that is, to educate people about disaster preparedness and to remain as a support service for our wonderful Newport Beach firefighters. We have invested personal equity to make our CERT program the best for our great city of Newport Beach and the best one in FEMA. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else?
Mayor Hen and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Those following the clerk's announcements may have noticed on the consent calendar you voted to terminate the city's development agreement with the group home operator doing business as Morningside Recovery. After your previous public hearing on that matter, I tried to quietly ask the city attorney by email to clarify for you and your staff the ramifications of a possible error that was made in the way that agreement was originally approved, an error which might make unenforceable the city's similar agreement still in effect with Sober Living by the Sea. The city attorney reminded me correctly, I suppose, that the correct way for residents to request a response from his office regarding legal concerns is by asking you to ask him by means of a comment at one of your public meetings. So I am making such a comment. My concern is not unlike the one raised by then-mayor Selich when the Sober Living by the Sea agreement was first being considered in 2009. According to the minutes, Mayor Selich asked the staff to clarify why that development agreement did not need sequer review and coastal commission approval. Special counsel Markman, who developed the agreements, assured council member Selich that the coastal commission issue had been thoroughly investigated with the conclusion that the operator would still have to obtain a coastal development permit for any new construction they might want to do. What the outside council failed to mention is that the development agreement itself, which is a sort of specialized amendment to the zoning code, is something completely different from a coastal development permit, which is essentially a construction permit. My concern is that California Government Code Section 65869 says that no development agreement for property in the coastal zone, irrespective of whether it seems to involve coastal issues or not, is effective without the formal approval of the California Coastal Commission, something these agreements have never received. As a citizen, I am always concerned when I see my government appearing to feel free to ignore laws it finds inconvenient to follow. Moreover, this particular issue is one your senior planning staff did not seem to have a ready answer to. Therefore, I hope at least some of you will share that concern and encourage the city attorney to help the public, as well as your staff, to understand if there is a problem with this failure to seek coastal commission approval of development agreements of this sort. Thank you.
So, Mr. City Attorney, is there a sequet problem with our approval of that development agreement?
No, sir. There's not a sequet problem with our development, approval of that development agreement, nor in my opinion is there a Coastal Act problem with respect to approval of that agreement. I did see the email from Mr. Mosher. I have reviewed the issue as well as realized that special counsel had previously advised the council with respect to the matter and concluded that special counsel was correct that we did not need to do a coastal development permit from the coastal commission to get approval of this development agreement because it's not development under the Coastal Act.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other public comment this evening?
My name is Corinne Spence. My family moved here April 1st, 1972, and I have to say that we have logged every minute, every day, every week, every month, that we have lived in Newport Beach. It's our town. I'm hearing a little bit of jitter that is a little disturbing to me about contracting out the public refuse service. We have the best services of any town that I can think of. I have friends who live in towns where they have the automated refuse service, and they are not very happy with it. As an example, I happen to know about this. There was an incident, this is the personal service of Newport Beach refuse service. There was, there was an incident down on Balboa Island where a lady had a $700 bicycle for her husband. It was thrown the box, and by accident, it was dumped into the trash truck. I have to tell you, it was found. There was another incident, a lady dropped her diamond ring, and it was found. Can you imagine all of this? It, you would... You wouldn't have that kind of service with an automated pickup. I just hope that you will think strong and hard about the way your citizens of this city love the services, not just refuse, but all the services that you give. And we appreciate it, and we appreciate you, and we hope that you will think about it long and hard because our heart is with our city.
Thank you. I have no doubt that we will think about it long and hard. Are there any other comments?
Mayor Hen, distinguished members of the city council, my name's Robin Kohler. I am a Corona del Mar resident, and I'm here tonight to discuss the issue of puppies for sale. Retail stores, you know, eventually as more citizens of Newport Beach find out and become educated about the truth of where these puppies are coming from, the outcry, it's going to grow. Towns and counties all over this nation are already banning the sales of puppies. Orange County shelters, as you know, are jam-packed, full of unwanted puppies and kittens. And they all, 99% of them, come from puppy mills. The Humane Society, you know, all these animal places will agree. Citizens and constituents, I don't believe, will knowingly support cruelty. And when they find out that they're being defrauded, I think that they're really going to be upset. These people say that they are giving these animals homes forever. No one can guarantee that any pet that they sell will have a home forever. They can't guarantee that it will be spayed or neutered. If that claim were even remotely true, we wouldn't have shelters around this nation that are jam-packed. Orange County rescue groups are scrambling to save and find homes for thousands of animals every day. And trash bins are overflowing with unwanted animals. Now, with this in mind, we have to consider the increasing costs to taxpayers to build and staff these facilities, to hold, medically treat, feed, and euthanize hundreds of thousands of animals that are unwanted. Since January 2008, California has spent over $897 million to do just that. And they have killed almost 2 million unwanted animals. 25 to 30% of these are pure breed animals, and at one time, someone did purchase these animals with the intention of giving them a forever home. What could California do with an extra $897 million? They could put that towards education for our children. We could have additional payroll for police and fire departments instead of the furloughs that many, many towns and governments are implementing across our state. Allowing additional outlets that sell animals only adds to the burden of an already overburdened system and overburdened taxpayers. It significantly contributes to the number of animals that will likely end up in shelters. It is simply not fiscally responsible. In Albuquerque, New Mexico, they banned the sale of dogs and cats. And two stores in that city that sold dogs and cats now work with rescues. Their total euthanasia rates decreased 32%. Adoptions increased 23%, and intakes decreased 6%.
Ma'am, will you be finishing shortly?
I will be finishing. So, on the flip side, stores that convert to a humane model eventually do save the towns and cities' money. So, I really, really ask you to consider ordinance and banning the sale of dogs and cats in Newport Beach. Thanks.
Okay. Do we have any other public comment?
Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor McKenn. I'm Kelly Sawyer. I'm a resident of Newport Beach. And I am here also in regards to the rally that was held at iHeartPuppies. I have sent a few emails with concerns. What I want to present with you today are USDA reports. These are legal agency documents of the breeders that she is supplying Newport Beach citizens and our very highly valued loyal patrons that visit our city. I will just go ahead and start with the facts. Sanborn Kennels, one of her suppliers, is a constant repeat violation with the USDA and the Animal Welfare Act. Conditions that were found in violation, there is a female Maltese that is observed to have a neck injury that has caused the entire head to tilt left permanently. There is also female Chihuahua that has abnormal bone structure of its limbs. The front legs are severely turned inward when the animal is standing. Abnormal physical structure of the animals results in further discomfort and health complications. There are two female Yorkshire Terriers that are observed to have coked loss. This, I believe, I addressed to you specifically in the email. I own a puppy mill survivor, and after a complete checkup, he still was carrying two human contagions, per CDC, giardia and sarcoptic mange. This specifically is an indication that these animals could be carrying similar diseases. Mange causes permanent baldness, and giardia can... My largest concern is for the children that are buying and holding these puppies can severely make a child ill and possibly kill a child with a compromised immune system. These have to be specifically tested for. They are not. When the animals come into our city, these animals, the previous conditions, those are genetic congenital malformations. And these are the parents of the puppies that are being sold up in Corona del Mar. You know, she is passing them off as non-puppy mill puppies or from USDA. These are USDA licensed facilities, and they're in constant violation. She is saying she doesn't buy from puppy mills. We have the evidence. I have three pages. One of her, another breeder of hers tied up the USDA violation. She tied up a golden retriever to a pole and shot it in the head. That is both against USDA regulation, Animal Welfare Act, and Nebraska for which the crime occurred. Okay, I'll tie it real quick. The nursery, the building that is the nursery, 87 puppies. While the inspector was inspecting the facility, the stinging, the ammonia was so severe... Ammonia is caused by buildup of urine. It was so severe, it was stinging upper respiratory and ocular discomfort.
Ma'am, your time is up.
That affects 127 animals. All right. I just urge you to look into this matter. It's not responsible to be supplying our citizens or our patrons with these sick, maladacted animals. It's cruel. And I just urge you to look into this matter for us.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other public comments?
Mayor Potam and Council, my name's Tommy Dan Jordan. I live at 627 Irvine Avenue. I, too, have been hearing that you're looking at outsourcing the refuse crew. Having heard earlier how well the city's doing after doing it with the parking meters and street sweepers, with the street sweepers, I've had to call numerous times because this new organization seems to drive too fast, drive too slow, or there's a car five houses down and they need to start getting out of the way instead of waiting for the last minute. To me, the services are going down in the city. When we got rid of PB and R, the services aren't the same. And the crew's been doing a great job here. I've been a longtime resident. I was born up on the hill. And I'd be really ashamed to lose more of the services to benefit maybe another service. The crew does a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. Yes?
Tommy?
Yes.
Where are you hearing this?
Around town.
Well, from who?
I hear from the trash guys. I hear from some of the guys down at the Legion that our trash is going to go away.
Okay, thank you.
And after seeing what's happened with you guys changing the street sweepers over, and it's kind of a shame they don't even carry placards saying that they're servicing Newport Beach. It can be confused with other sweepers in town.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilmember Hill?
I do have two. I would just like to acknowledge that the Lido Citizens Advisory Panel Revitalization Committee has held its first organizational meeting. They are focusing on moving forward with design standards for the Lido Village revitalization area, which includes this city hall site, Lido Plaza, and Lido Village. And our second meeting, where we will see the first draft of the design standards, will be held on the 18th of this month and in the Friends of the Library Room at 4:00 in the afternoon. And I would urge anyone that has an interest as to what's going on on this particular site where we are right now today to attend that meeting on the 18th. The Corona del Mar Revitalization Citizens Advisory Panel Meeting will hold its first organizational meeting on the 31st of this month. It, too, will be at 4:00 in the afternoon, and it will be at Oasis. And we will begin the process there. That particular project is the intersection of MacArthur and CPH... CPH. It's already been a long day. Coast Highway, and we will be picking up the vision plan by the Corona del Mar Bid and Corona del Mar Chamber and Citizens Association and working on that and a redo of that intersection. So, once again, if you have any interest in the Corona del Mar activity, that meeting will be held on the 31st. I believe that's the last Wednesday of the month, 4:00 in the afternoon at Oasis. I urge you to attend. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rosansky, do I still have a district to represent?
I think so, maybe even a bigger and better district. Yes, I'd just like to announce that the Newport Beach Redistricting Committee met on August 4th. We had our third and it looks like our final meeting. We came to agreement on a proposed redistricting option for the city after hearing a lot of public support and comment from council members as well as staff members. And that will be forwarded to, or is being forwarded to, the city council for review and approval, probably sometime, if not the first meeting in September, the second. So, we had three meetings and we were done. It was probably the fastest committee, the shortest-lived committee I've ever served on in my eight years on city council now.
Very good. Mayor Potam Gardner?
Just for those who are interested in our Bike Safety Committee, usually we meet on the first Monday of the month, but it's going to be the Labor Day weekend, so we will be meeting the second Monday, which is September 12th, again in the Friends Room of the library at 4:30. I got there at 4:00 last time. 4:30.
Okay. Councilmember Daigle?
I have none.
Councilmember Curry?
The Finance Committee will meet Thursday, the 11th, at 2:00. So, I would invite the public who'd like to attend that meeting to come. We did see the county assessment rule has been out, and we did have positive assessed valuation growth, albeit not very much, which makes us one of the only cities in Orange County to have positive assessed valuation growth every year during the recession.
Very good. Councilmember Selich?
No reports.
And I have no reports. So, it's time to move on to public hearings.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the first public hearing involves the Nero property at 105 15th Street. And Jay Garcia and Kim Brant will make the presentation. Might give them a moment to set up the projector. As is typical with our public hearings, staff makes a brief report. And then, if the applicant is here, they're welcome to make a statement. Then, public in general, the applicant can summarize, and then we have a proposed resolution and ordinance that we'd ask you to adopt. Kim, any comments?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is an item that requires three actions. One is a general plan amendment. The other is an amendment to our coastal land use plan. And the third is a zoning map amendment. And the intent of all three of these actions is to correct or change the legal non-conforming status of a building and bring it into conformance with the new general plan designation that has been requested by the applicant. The Planning Commission did review it and recommended approval to the city council on a 7-0 vote. And have I given you enough time, Jay, to get ready to make your presentation?
Yes, thank you. I have a very brief presentation. The report, I think, was very self-explanatory, and the commission took an action to recommend the approval of the application. The vicinity map shows the location of the property next to a property that is already zoned for mixed use. And then, to the north of that, to the north is another R2 lot. As the report stated, the property at 105 15th was approved as a mixed-use project by use permit in 1990. And this action will basically just put that approval back in place by giving it a zoning and designation that is consistent with the use that's there. I won't bore you with the specifics here, but it does comply with the FAR limitations. This picture of the property on the left, and to the right is the R2 duplex that exists next door, which is the alley. And then, this is the other mixed-use property to the south, which is at the corner of the Oceanfront and 15th. Open to questions, if you have any?
Okay. Councilmember Selich?
Yeah, you said this puts the use permit back in place. The use permit's still in existence, isn't it?
It is still in existence, yes.
So, what's the... We spent a lot of time on the general plan and the coastal plan, so what's the reason for doing this? Does the applicant have a project that he's proposing or something?
No, he does not. The general plan basically was putting the residential in place in areas where it looked like it should be. And it didn't look at all the specific properties that had non-conforming uses. The old code would have allowed non-conforming uses to continue without abatement, but the ordinance in 2008, which required the abatement of non-residential uses in residential districts, caught up a handful of properties which now either have to abate...
So, this is a situation like the Frog House?
Yes, it is. Identical.
Mayor Potam Gardner?
Is it... Well, what about the 15th Street Surf Shop? Now, is that... Does that have to also get a permit?
No, it does not. That one is consistent with the zone.
Oh, right along the boardwalk is one thing, and one house in is another?
Correct. This is where the surf shop is and...
And that was already there. And then, the one on the other corner is also?
That's where the Little Market is, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, this is just... So, there's two commercial properties already and four?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, and if I just may add, not to confuse the issue, but there is an application pending for the Surf Shop property, which is on appeal and will be brought back to the city council at your next meeting.
What sort of proposal?
It's a proposal to add an additional unit to the property.
Mr. Mayor?
Actually, that's for the Stuff Surfer property, not the Surf Shop itself, I think.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. So, we'll be seeing that one.
Councilmember Selich?
How many more of these properties that are subject to that ordinance do we have hanging around?
There were 15 in total. I think there were only about six or seven that would be subject to going through an amendment if they choose to. Those that will not be asking for amendments will be asking for extensions of the abatement period, which will go to a hearing officer.
So, Jay, are you saying that how many are left that haven't gone through any of that yet?
Seven.
You know, I'd just point out to the council that, you know, one of the things we were doing in the general plan was to try and reduce the amount of commercial out on the peninsula. I'm kind of caught in a conundrum here with this small piece of property, but if you look at the bigger issue, what we were trying to do on the peninsula, just taking this back to residential, kind of flies in the face of what we were trying to achieve in the general plan. Maybe this abatement thing we adopted wasn't the best idea because it's forcing us to either go back and do something like this as opposed to allow these uses to continue as a non-conforming use.
Councilmember Rosansky?
Yeah, I guess, and I agree with that to a large degree, but I don't think we were looking to put people out of business either. I think that we did expect that they would move forward as non-conforming uses, and clearly, he can't do that, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so unfortunately, events overtook us after we passed the general plan, and we're placed in this situation with those 15 properties or so... we're placed in this situation with those fifteen properties or so where we, I guess, need to make an adjustment or force them out of business.
Well, no, I realize that, so that's what I'm saying, that perhaps it was a mistake to adopt the ordinance for abatement, and maybe we should change that.
Well, I wouldn't agree with that. I think for fifteen properties versus the downside of removing that ordinance and the potential that it opens for other types of uses in the residential areas to come in would probably not be to our benefit.
All right. Any other council comments? Okay. Do we have any comments? Would the applicant care to make a statement here?
Yes, thank you. My name is Maury Nero. I live at 105 Fifteenth Street. I'm the applicant for the amendments. I'll be very brief. We built our house in nineteen ninety and nineteen ninety-one to conform to the Newport Beach Planning and Building Codes. To convert our house now would be amount to a complete demolition, and we'd have to start over. It's just out of the question for me. I have nothing else unless you...
Any questions?
No, but I'll move the item.
Pardon?
I said I will move the item. No, but I will move the item.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Hill here a second.
All right. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Is there any further discussion? Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the titles for the ordinance and the resolution. Ordinance number two thousand and eleven dash twenty-one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving a zoning code amendment to change the zoning designation of property located at 105 Fifteenth Street. And resolution number two thousand and eleven dash eighty-five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving amendments to the land use element of the general plan and coastal land use plan for property located at 105 Fifteenth Street. And with that, the motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you, Jay and Kim. On to the next item, Mariners Point.
This next item is also a public hearing. The same process would apply. Kim Brandt and Jaime Maria are here from the Community Development Department.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a planning application that was called up for review that was previously reviewed by the Planning Commission. There is multiple actions associated with the application. There's an environmental determination, which is involved a mitigated negative declaration. There's also a finding related to a traffic study. A general plan amendment is proposed, as well as a site plan approval. Mr. Maria will give an overview of the project, and since the Planning Commission has reviewed the project, the applicant has modified the proposal, and I think that is something that the council needs to consider.
Thank you, Kim. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The Mariners Point project is located at one hundred to three hundred West Coast Highway at the northwest, western corner of Coast Highway and Dover Drive. Surrounding land uses include the single-family neighborhood of Cliff Haven to the north with four residences overlooking the property site. To the west is commercial development within the Mariners Mile Corridor. To the south is additional single-family residences within the Bay Shores community. And to the west is the Lower Castaway Site, which is owned by the city and currently used for construction staging. The property itself currently consists of a total of six lots, and is currently developed with two commercial buildings that are currently vacant and in a state of disrepair. As you can see on these photographs here, the existing buildings are boarded up, and the site is fenced in. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing structures on the site, consolidate the six lots into one development site, and construct a new two-story commercial building and three-story or three-level parking structure. Because the project design has been modified slightly from what was originally proposed and presented to the Planning Commission on June twenty-third, what I'd like to do is provide a summary of the project as originally proposed, then discuss the issues and concerns raised at the Planning Commission meeting. I'll then summarize the modified project and the effects of the modifications on the design and applications. And then I'll summarize the required applications and approvals required to accommodate the project that's currently proposed. And lastly, I'll set forth the council's options for the project. This is the original design that was proposed and presented to the Planning Commission. As you can see, the commercial building is located on the eastern portion of the site. A total of twenty-three thousand fifteen square feet of commercial floor area was proposed, which equates to a floor ratio of approximately point seven. The western portion of the site, the applicant proposed a three-level parking structure, which includes a total of a hundred and thirty-six parking spaces. These parking spaces are made up of a combination of standard stalls, tandem parking stalls, and valet parking stalls, which requires the implementation of a parking management plan in order to effectively operate and manage the parking structure. As you can see from the site plan, the project maximizes the lot and maximizes the building envelope. However, the applicant had proposed extensive landscaping within the right-of-way along Coast Highway and Dover Drive, including a significant water feature here at the corner of the site. The original proposal also included the use of the public right-of-way for outdoor dining for future restaurant use. As you can see on the elevation of the project, the project was designed to a high level of architectural detail. It includes a variation in roof height to provide visual interest and includes a variation in building materials. Roof heights were proposed to exceed the city's thirty-one-foot base height limit for that zoning district. The towers are the, or would be the tallest portions of the design, with heights reaching approximately thirty-seven and a half feet, with the exception of the main architectural tower and cupola feature here at the corner of the site, where the top of the finial would reach a height of forty feet. As you can see from the roof plan, the roof has been designed to be clean and respective views from above to the maximum feasible while still maintaining the project's objectives. All the mechanical equipment would be located within this enclosed mechanical equipment well or screen enclosure towards the back of the property. Also, the third level of the parking structure has been designed with a partial roof covering, which covers approximately two-thirds of the parking deck, and also will screen the view of the parking deck and activity from the residents above. It also serves as a noise attenuation buffer. And lastly, because the parking structure cannot accommodate all of the original project's parking demands on-site, the applicant had originally proposed the use of twenty off-site parking spaces at a medical office complex at six oh one Dover Drive. At the June twenty-third Planning Commission meeting, a number of residents spoke in opposition of the project and generally had the following concerns. They were concerned with the size of the project and felt it was too big for the project site and out of scale with the community. They were concerned with the heights of the tower elements and the possible impacts to their views. They're also concerned with the height of the parking structure and its proximity to their homes and possible impacts to the loss of privacy, lighting, and noise. They also expressed concerns with noise and odors from potential future restaurant uses. They expressed opposition to the need to install a drainage swale along the rear of their properties. They also expressed concern with possible traffic conflicts and problems that could occur due to the project's proximity to the busy intersection of West Coast Highway and Dover Drive. And lastly, they're expressed significant concern with the precedence this project may set for future development along Coast Highway. At the conclusion of the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to deny the project. They shared many of the residents' concerns and also expressed concerns with the onsite circulation of the parking structure. In particular, they're concerned with the steepness of the ramp within the parking garage and the potential impacts to visibility and safety that could create. They're also concerned with the location of the handicap parking spaces within the garage due to the path of travel that would have to occur in front of the ramp and entrance into the driveway or into the parking structure. They expressed concern with the off-site parking location and the uncertainty with the long-term availability of that parking. But their biggest concern was with the intensity and scale of the project. They felt it was too large for the site, and it required a number of deviations in order to accommodate the project. The project has been appealed by Councilmember Selich in order to provide the City Council an opportunity to review the project, given its location at the western entry into the Mariners Mile Corridor, which is an area the city is fostering revitalization efforts currently. However, for the City Council's consideration, the applicant has modified the project to address some of the Planning Commission and neighbors' concerns. This is an elevation and site plan of the revised project. As you can see, the scale and bulk of the project remains substantially similar. However, the intensity of the project has been reduced by approximately three thousand square feet of commercial floor area. The resulting floor area is nineteen thousand nine hundred and five square feet, which reduces the FAR to approximately a point six FAR. With the reduction of floor area, that provided the applicant opportunity to expand the parking structure a little bit and provide additional parking on-site. The parking structure now provides a total of a hundred and fifty parking spaces, eliminating the need for off-site parking, which is no longer part of this request. It also provides sufficient parking on-site to eliminate the need to modify the code-required parking requirements, and therefore there's no adjustment to the parking requirements. Also, by enlarging the parking structure, some circulation improvements have been made to the parking garage. The ramp within the parking structure has been elongated, allowing the slope of the ramp to be reduced in steepness. Instead of fifteen percent slope, it's now thirteen percent. Additionally, the handicap parking spaces have all been relocated adjacent to the commercial portion of the project, eliminating the path of travel issue that was raised by the Planning Commission. Additionally, they've added this architectural tower element to the western corner of the parking structure and added this wooden trellis feature along the entire face of the covering of the parking structure. This enhances the aesthetics of the parking structures viewed from Coast Highway, but it also serves as a noise attenuation function and provides additional screening from the residents above. And lastly, they're no longer proposing the swale along the rear of the project site. They will be redesigning the project to incorporate a drainage element to the wall itself. In conclusion...
Excuse me, Jaime. The roof covering, the solid roof covering, was that, was that increased as well?
No, the roof covering remains the same. They've added this tower element here, and they've also expanded this tower element slightly, which provides greater coverage of that third level of the parking structure. And then they added this wood trellis.
I see. Okay.
Is there a proposal where signage would go?
We haven't reviewed the signage yet. That'll come at a later date. In conclusion, the project does implement the goal of improving Mariners Mile and redeveloping the dilapidated property. The project does exhibit a high level of architectural detail and has been designed to be respectful of the views from above to the maximum extent feasible while maintaining the project's objectives. And again, the project has been modified to address some of the Planning Commission's concerns. However, with that said, it doesn't address all of their concerns, and the visual scale and bulk of the project remains substantially unchanged. Should the City Council decide to approve the project, there's a number of project applications that would be required. The first is a general plan amendment to increase the development limit of the site from a point-five floor ratio to a development limit of nineteen thousand nine hundred and five square feet, which equates to approximately a point six FAR. Zoning code amendment would be required as a companion to the general plan amendment, also increasing the development limit of the site to a point six FAR. Site development review is required to allow the construction of the commercial development, and specifically to increase the height of the building as requested by the applicant. Conditional use permit would be required to allow for the construction of a parking structure adjacent to a residential district, and also to approve the parking management plan prepared by the applicant. Variance would be required to allow the development to encroach five feet into the rear five-foot setback. And lastly, a parcel map would be required to consolidate the six lots into one development site. In addition to the project applications, the municipal code requires preparation of a traffic study for projects that generate more than three hundred average daily trips. The project as proposed would generate approximately one thousand two hundred and ninety-two average daily trips. However, the traffic study indicates that the study area intersections will remain operating at acceptable levels of service and that no improvements or mitigation would be required as a result of project implementation. And pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project. The document indicates that the project would not result in potentially significant impacts to the environment. However, eleven mitigation measures are recommended for adoption. The document itself was released for a thirty-day public review period in which the city received a total of nine comment letters. Although not required by state law, the staff has prepared written responses to each of those comment letters and have been included in your staff reports. Additionally, the revised response to comment documents includes a topic-by-topic analysis of the project modifications made by the applicant for the council's consideration to ensure that these modifications don't result in new environmental impacts or result in the need of any new mitigation measures. And the conclusion is that they don't result in any new impacts, and therefore the mitigated negative declaration, it's not warranted for recirculation. So the City Council has the following options. You can deny the project or approve the project. Also, if the City Council feels that the modifications are substantial, they can refer the project as currently proposed back to the Planning Commission for further review and consideration. Also, the City Council can direct the applicant to modify the project. For example, if the council feels that the scale and bulk of the project is too much, they can direct the applicant to reduce the intensity of the project to comply with the general plan limitations, in which case the redesigned project would be reviewed by the Planning Commission. Lastly, if the council decides to approve this project, I do have one correction to condition number seven of the draft conditions of approval. This is a condition related to the establishment of the parking requirements for the site. However, there is a reference to the approved off-site parking lot, which should not be in the condition, as the off-site parking request has been eliminated from the proposal, therefore recommending that that portion of the condition be struck out. That concludes my presentation. Staff's available for questions. We also have Joan Hadfield from the Planning Center in attendance tonight and available to answer any questions related to the environmental documentation. And we have Bob Mattson from RBF, who prepared the traffic study, and available to answer any questions regarding the traffic study.
Mayor Protim Gardner?
I read that the pinch point would be moved because of this. Will it be moved back south or, I mean, east or west?
It'd be moved west. I'll pull up. Let's see if I have a good site plan. It's, I kind of cut it off, but the existing sidewalk curves here, so this is what we call is a lane drop.
Uh-huh.
It will be extended to the west approximately thirty feet to accommodate this driveway. However, that does move that pinch point down a little bit.
Okay. And then, the use of the public right-of-way for, say, outdoor dining, is this normal? Do we, is this unusual?
It's a little unusual. There is a provision in the, I think it's council policy, that allows sidewalks for sidewalk cafe and outdoor dining. However, in this case, the applicant did speak with the Public Works Director, and they indicated they would be okay with allowing this outdoor dining within this area. However, we do have a condition of approval that recommends they actually landscape this portion of the right-of-way, and that once the future restaurants do come in for a use permit... the future restaurants do come in for a use permit and we better know their operation and floor plan, they can ask for that at a later date.
Okay. What's the procedure going to be? Are we going to have the applicant, and then are we going to do the public comment?
Well-
Or what's the deal? Because I have lots of questions.
Feel free to ask your questions now, or if you want to wait until after public comment.
Well, let me, at least, I can lay them out there, and then various people can address them perhaps. I have some questions about the hours, because in the conditions of approval, page 64, handwritten, condition of approval 17 says the hours are 6 to 11, but then there are lots of references in the parking till 1:00 a.m., so I'd like some clarification of that, because if I were a neighbor, it'd make a big difference to me whether the whole shop area is closing at 11 or at 1.
Do you want to take these one at a time for answers, or?
Okay.
I can answer that.
All right.
For the purposes of the parking analysis, we considered what a restaurant may be asking for as far as hours, and so that's why we analyzed 1:00 p.m. However, each restaurant will be required to come in on their own and request a conditional use permit, in which case later hours can be established. But per the condition of approval, if there's any uses that don't require a conditional use permit, such as a retail operation, they would be limited to these hours concluding at 11:00 p.m.
Okay. That, again, if I were a neighbor and I saw that the restaurant square footage had been increased and the retail had been decreased, that would probably be not the thing that made me happiest, because it's probably the restaurants that I'd be most concerned about as far as noise and that sort of thing. So that's, that would be a consideration of mine. I am concerned about the precedence, because I understand this is a difficult property, and that's why it sat there for so long. But we are giving a lot of extras, and it is massive in comparison to what else is there. And we have the properties next door, which are going to want to be developed, and I'm sure that they're going to find that they have difficulties in their layout or something. And so we are making a decision, I think, here tonight about what the rest of this area could very well look like. So that's something that I need to wrestle with. As far as the heights, I know we don't protect views, and I understand that most of the views are not going to be interfered with, but I do have a concern when we say that the main tower, the gazebo type, will be, the cupola, thank you, will be interfering with a partial view. It's one thing for the city to say, hey, we don't protect private views, but when they're asking for a variance, and we say, yeah, we're going to give you a variance that's going to interfere with your private view, that to me is something different. So that's something also that I am concerned about and would like to see if maybe there's some options there. And then, I just, I have a huge issue with the parking. This whole valid thing, I really would like somebody to come up and explain why this is not an area of concern, because it just doesn't seem to make much sense, but perhaps this is something that's used all the time and works fine. I just look at it and say, okay, I came in at 3:00, did the retail, and I parked in the thing that says it closes at 5:00, but I decided to go to dinner. Can I not get my car when I come at 8:00, or has it been towed because I'm in the area where it's valid parking and that sort of thing? It just seemed like there's so many things that could go wrong. So I would love to have some more information on the parking.
All right. Other questions from council at this juncture?
It did have one. With the height, obviously you have to make findings for a variance. What were the findings that were made for the height variance, just irregular size and shape of property?
I know. It's actually, the variance request is for the encroachment to the rear setback. The code allows for an increase in height through the site plan review process, and there are a number of findings, and they appear on handwritten page 36, starting on page 36. One of the findings is that the project is providing additional project amenities beyond those that would otherwise be required, in which case they're significantly redeveloping the site. They're providing high-level architectural detail that might not otherwise be provided on a your typical development. The increased or enhanced landscape and water feature within the right-of-way are cited as additional project amenities. The building itself, within the mitigated negative declaration, we did do a noise analysis, and within that analysis, it does show that the project would help attenuate noise from Coast Highway for the residents above and could reduce noise by approximately nine, or up to nine decibels for some of those residents, so that is cited as a project amenity. The project is undergrounding or removing the power poles located along the rear of the property, and they're actually located on the residential lots, although not required to remove them per municipal code or any city requirement. They are removing them and undergrounding the power lines, therefore that's a significant project amenity. And then another project amenity would be the reduction of the existing curb cuts around that property, and they would be reducing the number of curb cuts from a total of five down to two. There are other findings related to the architectural design to ensure that the design provides additional visual interest through the use of light and shadow, through the use of vertical elements and varied roof planes, which the design does. There's a finding regarding that the increased height will not result in undesirable abrupt scale changes. And lastly, there's a finding related to the structure will not have no more floor than could have otherwise been achieved without the approval of the height increase.
Thank you.
I just had a question. With regard to the FAR going to .6, which is still .1 approximately above the requirements, what's the difference in square footage for the project to get to .5?
To get to .5, they would have to reduce the floor area to, I believe it's 16,000, just over 16,000 square feet.
So roughly an additional 3,000 square foot reduction in the project?
Correct.
Okay. Did you have another question?
No, thank you.
If you'd like to.
All right, then, let's proceed to public comment, and we'll start with the applicant if they wish to make a statement.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. First, I'd like to make an introduction of the owners of BBAS Corporation, Glenn Verdal and Eva Verdal, sister and brother.
You may wish to introduce yourself.
Oh, did I not do that? Todd Ridgeway, the project developer on this. So if I could make an introduction, and they would like to make some preliminary comments, and then I have minimal comments, and then we'll get into technical presentation. So Glenn and Eva, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you. Just a few comments. Just want to say good evening. Thank you for being here. I'm Eva Verdal. This is my brother Glenn Verdal. We are the owners of Mariners Point. My brother resides in Newport Beach. I live in Corona del Mar. We have several businesses that are family-owned and operated in the area, Winston's Newport Jewelers, Winston's Island Jewelers on Balboa Island, and I also own Newport Beach Med Spa in Newport Beach. As you know, this is our big family project. We're hoping to make this something that gets handed down in our family for generations. We've saved and worked hard and looked long to have this type of project come our way. One of the main stores, we'd like it to be our flagship jewelry store. As you're aware, we've been working on this development for about a year and a half now. Todd Ridgeway, our developer, Todd Stoughton-Burrell, our architect. We chose what we feel to be very wisely choices in working with them, their history, their expertise, their excellence in what they do. Just as we've chosen them, I just want to make sure everybody knows we will be choosing a property management team on the same type of choices. Features of this development, you know, we've looked at many other types of locations to get an idea of what we want and what a vision would be for us. We just want to ensure everybody that this development is really going to be nothing less than excellent. Mariners Point is going to be a beautiful attraction. Aesthetics include the creative designs, unique landscaping, beautiful structures, great colors. Regarding restaurants, we just want to say that we are very carefully studying and reviewing restaurants that are requesting leases. Only the best can be selected for this type of development at this caliber in the city of Newport Beach. Regarding stores, jewelry store, boutiques, spa, restaurant, it's going to give visitors and businesses a lot of different options. We feel this development will benefit the city and its residents in many ways. As a tourist attraction, many tourists and residents will enjoy the beautiful architecture and all that the plaza has to offer. Mariners Point will be convenient and eye-catching. It will replace the old deserted, dilapidated property that's there now. We have the option to beautify this, and we'd really like to have this opportunity to see this through. As our developer will mention, this project will really rarely have any impact on the residents. We have redesigned and altered many aspects in order to satisfy the bluff neighbors, so we hope they will see the benefits of the project themselves. As I said, this is really close to our hearts. We have a large family. We've been in the area for a long time. We've been in business for a long time. We have lots of kids between us to hand this down to. Time is of the essence, because as well as us and potential tenants, we would like to see this completed by the end of next year. Our contractors and development team are ready to start breaking ground as soon as possible. I just want to say Newport Beach City planners and staff members have worked extremely hard. They've dissected and critiqued every inch of this project. They've taken all views into consideration. They've prepared hundreds of pages of reports. I'm sure they've contributed hundreds of hours for the past 18 months. They've worked diligently, and they've done an outstanding job. Special thanks to Jaime. This project does, as you know, face a struggle due to the building on a narrow lot, and we've really worked hard to make it work, workable for all, just as we've envisioned. We really are hoping the bluff neighbors will appreciate and support this project for the better of all residents, visitors, and businesses of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a few comments, if I know how to use this machine. Jaime, do I just push this button? All right. Okay. Let me say that this project has been in the works for, as Eva said, a year and a half. It's about vision. It's about revitalization. It's about a renaissance for Mariners Mile. I am part of the Mariners Mile Association. They have visited this site. They support this site. I believe you have a letter from the president of that organization, and we urge you to review that. The, let's see if I can, thank you. There is a site, and let me start off with, it is a vacant 9,000-square-foot building in extreme disrepair, and there are numerous homeless people that live there. I happen to live in the house right at the, this is in east-west orientation, and due north are the residences. And if you go to the very northwest corner, that corner right there, that is my home right there, and I clearly support this project. The, and I can say, living there, my daughter called in and reported a fire down there. Again, we've had numerous police activity down there because of the homelessness. So it's a site in the center of town. It's at a focal point, and it's at the entryway to Mariners Mile, which is looking for a complete renaissance, and we see this as the beginning of that renaissance. The project that we presented in June 23rd to the planning commission, they made numerous comments. We listened to those comments, and we reduced the overall square footage. We went from a .7 to a .6 FAR. The net usable is now actually 18,050. It was 17,750. Because of the narrowness of the site, the massing will probably always remain the same. By code, you can do, the parcel size is 33,000 square feet. If you do a .50 FAR, that gets it down to 16,500 square feet. Again, in order to park it because of the narrowness, you need a parking structure. I like to call it a ground level and two levels above. The parking structure itself is actually has almost 15 feet of height to it. As fire engines and/or delivery and/or trash trucks, there will be no noise to the people up above. As indicated earlier, there will be no, with the roof, after we met with the citizens in June, we put a roof on this project, and the top level of the parking is for valet and employee parking. There is no patron parking up there. Let me make a comment. As a redesign, we went from 136 spaces to 150. We can actually self-park this until 4:00 in the afternoon. However, the traffic engineer disagreed with four of our parking spaces and said they wanted to start valet at 4:00 o'clock. I think operationally, once it gets built and open, our intent is to try to make it self-parked up until late afternoon and then open it up in the evening to the residents. The parking deck further with the roof on it, it blocks the noise. It blocks the light. Again, all the screening of the trash and the deliveries is prevented on the ground floor. The ramps, which was a concern for the planning commission, their concern was as you went to the top, and let me say, code says you can do 15%. We're actually a little bit less than 12% by elongating those. We've actually reduced any issues regarding the travel and operation. The second level of the parking deck is on a level with the commercial space. So the intent was to create people, easy pedestrian movement on-site, both downstairs and on the second level. There is no off-site parking. That was a concern, and we have taken care of that. As was stated, we're closing five drive-aisles. There are two pole signs out there. I can candidly say they'll be removed. I know that's a blessing to the people here. The, let me go, whoops. That's a site as it exists. Where's the, there it is. This was done last week. This is a perspective. Some of you had asked for this. It's actually taken, it was a photo, and this was, and I'll let Todd Stoughton-Burrell, the architect, talk to this, but it is to scale with the houses up above. Let me say that there is no view impairment. There is one comment made by a gentleman who lives at 411. We actually have a photo from his window. The only impairment from his side window is the finial on top of the cupola, and we actually have a picture. And that, actually, that finial is in direct line with a tree down at the bay, so the tree has more blockage, but-
So Todd, there were no view simulations done of this then, other than that photo?
We have a number of, Todd can make some presentation. We have a number of photos from up above, and we actually, in his technical presentation, you'll see sightlines from up above. The parcels up there are at 60 feet. So the last comment I'd like to make and keep it very positive, this is creating a new, beautiful entry. As you come up over the Bay Bridge, you're going to see a gorgeous project here. It will create both temporary construction jobs, long-term jobs in the retail component. It'll add to the sales tax and to the property tax. This has been a severely depressed property for a number of years. It's, again, it's in conformity with the overlay of the Mariners Mile Association, and it's in conformity with numerous visioning processes that have occurred in the past. With that, I would like, I'm open to any, I can take questions later. I'd like to have Todd Stoughton-Burrell, who's the project architect, make a presentation. Ken Knight from Sunset Parking is here to talk about valet, if you want to know about the day-to-day operations. The intent is really to get it to park for restaurants at night. Let me say, in the last couple of weeks, we've had kind of a different, we were trying to do a small restaurant- to do a small restaurant on the ground floor. That restaurant still exists and a larger one on the upper floor. We're now being approached by a financial institution. It's not inconceivable that the tenant mix will change. To address the operational hours, as Jaime succinctly put it, eventually they will all have to come in for a conditional use permit for alcohol serving and hours of operation. We asked for and presented restaurant space to park it. And actually, this go-around, from June twenty-third, we've actually reduced the restaurant space and we've reduced the medical space, albeit a few hundred feet, but it's actually less. So with that, let me introduce Todd and he can make his presentation. Thank you.
I just had a question because it says in the report that you're actually increasing the restaurant area. Did you say you didn't?
No, that was an incorrect statement. It's actually less.
Okay. We just saw the report that it was.
I'll go into that and some of the numbers. My name's Todd Stoughton-Burrell. It's Stoughton-Burrell Architects and Planners. We have our office in Laguna Beach. I love this project. I think this is a great project. We're very excited to present it to you. And our job as architects is to really be the artists of a lot of people's points of view. We're dealing with people's points of view that are residents, that neighbor this project, people's points of view that are in the city, the city code, the fire marshal, the traffic engineer, also the points of view of the landowner and the tenants that will go into this project. We've been working on this for about a year and a half with the city and we've probably had, I don't know, thirty meetings with all these different groups. I haven't met Councilman Hill since we, I have to say, we graduated from school, I think, in the same year, in the same college. I won't say the year. But we haven't seen each other for quite a while. This is a rendering, superimposed over the photograph that you saw just before. I'll go back to that photograph. And we constructed this rendering with the use of story poles that were erected on the site a couple of months ago. They've been taken down now. And then built the sketch right over those story poles. So it's as far as we can say, a very accurate depiction of how the project would be viewed from the intersection of Dover and West Coast Highway. I keep wanting to call it P C H. because that's what it's called in Laguna Beach, but I guess it's different here.
Some people call it C P H.
C P H.
We'll talk about that later.
The project is designed to have the scale that's comfortable and appropriate for Mariners Mile. No matter what you do on the site with the density that needs to be done to be able to make the site work, you're dealing with a two-story retail building. A two-story retail building is very difficult to put within thirty-five feet. Most retail buildings are seventeen-foot floor-to-floor. Okay? Any mall is that way. Because retail buildings want to have a clear height with inside the shopping space of twelve feet. We've scaled this building down as much as possible to provide twelve-foot clear height in a fourteen-and-a-half-foot floor-to-floor height. So that gives us two-and-a-half feet for structure, mechanical, and plumbing runs, which is a difficult feat. Also, the parking structure, which I'll show you in the project, has the first level of the structure, fourteen-foot clear, which allows fire trucks to go into the project, trash trucks, service trucks. Also, the parking structure is completely enclosed from the back and the sides, so no light or sound can escape from the garage from the servicing of it or from the patrons who use it. When you go down the highway, this main piece right here is the only piece that is forty feet high. And I'm going to go through some sections on the project to talk about how the height is determined. All of the height measurements everybody's picking around is all measured from the lowest part of this site. There's portions of the site that are fifteen feet higher than the lowest point. I'll point that out. The average parapet height around the building is thirty-five feet. There's only one place where a pinnacle is this high, pokes up to forty feet. The sloping roofs permitted in your code slope up into, oh, the ridge of this roof is about thirty-seven-five from, again, the lowest point of the site. This is the main entry to the site, which is visible here. This is fourteen-foot clear as an entry. There is a retail building below right here, so even though this is a parking structure, it's mitigated by retail, movement of walls, and clad with stone and landscaping and with varying roof heights. Also, the building itself is constructed with several other buildings that mitigate even the size of the retail building. When you look at it, you see this is an element, that is an element, and this other thing is an element. This is the stair and elevator, which is located underneath this roof near the parking, which is glass so that people feel safe going into the project. If they park on the second level and you go to the first, they're not going into an enclosed elevator. They're completely open to the public and a safe transition to those levels. Unfortunately, your projector doesn't pick up a lot of detail on the parking here, but I think you have it all in your packets where you can read all the detail. I'm going to use my pointer because that one doesn't seem to work. This is the ramp. You enter here and you can valet into the parking, the ramp here. Since we lengthened the garage, we've reduced the ramp to about thirteen, twelve-and-a-half percent, which is a very smooth ramp. I live on a street that's twenty percent where I live in Laguna Beach. This is only thirteen. When the project is valeted, there's a stairway in the middle of the garage so that when the project goes into a valet situation, the valet can run right up these stairs right in the middle of the garage and access the cars in a lickety-split manner. On the second level, this level is at the same level as the retail. You can actually walk and park and go right into this retail. This is the elevator. Handicap parking is here. The ramp is here. The stair that accesses and also is a legal exit is this place right here. On the third level, this is primarily used for valet and employee parking. And it is covered by a roof element. This roof covers the majority of the garage and certainly any part of the garage that can be viewed from the hill. And we've added this element, this tower element on the side, to block any view from this part of the community into any parking that may be there. All around this project is a four-hour wall with no penetrations. So landscape plan, we're not proposing any patio here at this point. All the pavers in front of this is all be, you know, stone pavers in front in the arrival experience to the project. Also, I might add that, and you'll see in the elevations, we've set back this wall. You know, we're permitted under code to go zero lot line there, but we've pulled the wall back a foot or so to allow for landscaping because between the time that this is built and the other part of the next-door neighbor, when they improve their project, we can't determine when that would be, so we want that to be a nice elevation. This is a striping plan. The city traffic engineer wanted to see this. This is how, it's, right now, the project is striped like this, is a clean stripe that goes all the way to here. I think one of the council people asked about this. This is where that lane ends at the moment and we're proposing that it be relocated here. And then this is restriped so that access would come into the garage this way and be, you would pull in when the purchase is valeted and valeted here, then the valet would take your car, put it upstairs in the ramp. Also, this area is available for a bus. So a bus can pull in here. There'll be a bus stop right here and then the bus pulls out. This is an exit only.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Because a lot of, one of the issues here, a lot of people bicycle and they face that curb in its current form. Is this actually a structure here? What is that?
No, striping.
Striping.
Similar to what's there now.
Okay.
Okay, so there is a.
Can you put something there or no?
A bicycle lane.
Some sort of a barrier so that the transition is more gradual?
Well, you know, we've been dealing with Caltrans on this and this solution was in a meeting with about twenty members of Caltrans.
Eleven.
Eleven, okay? And this is the solution that they've all unanimously agreed to. It's striping. We think that making a permanent barrier there, and I think it is their opinion as well, is that be dangerous and people would, you know, run into it and trip over it, whereas if it's striped, it allows a little more flexibility.
Striped until you run into a permanent barrier?
Well, that's the way it is now and then this would be also striped. When they, see, this was a recent take. The property used to be all the way out here. Okay? And then the Caltranses took this when they improved the intersection and put the curb here, leaving, I think, six curb cuts all the way around here. And so we're taking away just having two now. And then working with the striping that exists, we've striped it according to their suggestion. This is a rendered roof plan. The roof would be the same colors and textures as the tile roofs of the project and they're designed to, you know, keep the sound into the, in the parking garage so no sound would escape. Also, they're designed to keep any light from escaping from the garage up to the upper Let me go back. This line right here is the section I'm going to talk about. If you cut the building in two and look this way, this would be the section that you would see. The first level of parking is fourteen-foot clear, so it's actually fourteen-foot eight inches to the same level as the retail level. This is the ramp. This is the retail store underneath the ramp. In your packets that show up a little bit better, what we've outlined is this line behind here. This line right here is actually the daylight line of the lot, the level of the lot in the back of the property. Let's look at this section. This is a section through the parking structure looking this way. This is the existing hill. This is the existing toe of that hill as it comes through into the garage. And all of the measurements of heights, just to simplify things, we've measured from the absolute lowest point of the site. In the back, the distance of the parking structure at the property line is less than twenty feet and the front is thirty-five feet. So this would be excavated. This is a retaining wall right here and all of the structure of the parking structure is coming off of that retaining wall.
Let me make sure I understand the roof height issue a little more carefully. Go back to that prior slide. So the roof height, you say, is thirty-five feet?
Well, that's to the.
To the top.
We've had some wonderful meetings with the neighborhood and they were really asking for a roof over the upper deck of the parking, which we've been able to provide within the thirty-five-foot envelope. And so the parapet of the building is thirty-five, so that line right there is thirty-five feet.
Yeah, but the roof itself goes above that.
Yeah. So it goes, only one-third of it punctures above that height. Actually, that's, see, if the line went right through here, and again, you can see that better in your package, from the thirty-five-foot line, which is here, hooks up to thirty-seven and a half feet in just a couple of locations.
But for code purposes, where we calculate an average of the roof because it's sloped, is that, can you explain that a little more carefully?
Now, the way the code works, we have a base height limit for the site. It's twenty-six feet for flat roofs or any parapet walls. You can go up to thirty-one feet if you have a sloped roof with a minimum three and twelve pitch. Through the site plan review process, you can exceed the base height limit up to the maximum height limit, which would be thirty-five feet for flat roofs or parapet walls and up to forty with a sloped roof.
Okay, so with the site review process, these roof heights are actually within the limits that our code provides.
Correct.
With the site review process.
Through discretion.
Right. And not only that, we've picked the lowest possible point on the site to do the measurement from. There is another calculation, which was much more complicated than the city. We can average the different heights of the site. And if we did it that, it would be, we could say it was lower, but, you know, we didn't want to do that. We measured from the height, so it makes it simple for people to understand. Okay, this section here is a section looking through the retail portion of the building. And again, here's the existing height of the bluff, which is like twelve-and-a-half to fifteen feet higher than the thirty-five feet of the building. This is where the building daylights at the back light, so that you're only like twenty-two feet higher off this edge of the property and you're thirty-five feet here. This is the existing grade as it goes through the site right there. Mechanical area would be completely enclosed in this project and it would contain scrubbing technology that would scrub all smells from any restaurant, if a restaurant is in here. That's still, we think there's going to be restaurants here, but it depends on how the building is tenanted. The roof itself would be a clean roof, no mechanical equipment or penetrations on the roof. And we've designed a project with this, these moldable, you know, roof heights so the perception of the project is more like a village, more like multiple buildings all in there tucked against underneath the bluff. And straight-on elevation, this is the main entry, which is wide and fourteen feet high. This is the parking exit. There's a ramp that's underneath this building and that retail facility that's there. There's the partial plan that relates to that elevation. Again, here's the elevator tower. Handicap parking is here, retail space. This is the elevation off of Dover, straight-on elevation. This is the elevation that faces the zero lot line to the west of the project. This is how this, you know, this is a straight-on partial plan that relates to this elevation. You can see that here's the cliff beyond where we're proposing a screen wall right in here that would screen any activity from this project. It should be noted that any penetration of this building is outboard from the neighborhood. It's facing the highway and to Dover. There is a calculation that you could do on an F A R. because you calculate F A R. on gross building area, okay? Theoretically, we could unenclose this back walkway and that would be not considered gross building area because it would be outside the envelope. We are considering it because we think that's a good thing for the neighborhood so that there's no penetrations of the back of the project in the neighborhood. There's no door that can open and nobody can go out on a balcony smoking or anything like that could happen there. But because we've enclosed that, that's almost twelve hundred square feet that goes towards the gross building area.
I have a question about the F A R., how we calculate that as it relates to the parking. So you have about a thirty-three thousand square foot lot and you have nineteen thousand approximately two-story commercial and that's what's calculated, calculated in the F A R. to get you your point six?
Correct.
And then your, okay, and then your fifty thousand parking garage is exempt from that calculation?
That's correct.
Okay.
Most every city calculates like that, yes.
Okay. And then have you explored any options in the parking beyond the garage?
Well, we proposed a scheme before, which had less parking in the garage, but it required off-site parking. And. And we've been working on this project a long time, and what needs to be understood when, you see, you make a rule like a point five FAR, and, and you're trying to solve the problem on a very difficult site like this, and this is a difficult site with difficult access points, and it's not real deep, is that a two-story building is a two-story building, and FAR point five is a two-story building, okay? And if you have to park that on the site, no matter how you do it, it requires a parking structure. There's no other way. And if, if you did a, a project, and we've done studies on this, if you did a project that was FAR sixteen point five, which would be, I mean, sixteen thousand five hundred, which would be the square footage of gross area, would be point five, you still couldn't park that with a two-story garage. It's impossible, because you would still require you to park twenty cars off-site in a two-story garage. And really, the, the garage, since it's so far underneath the clip and it's covered with, with a, a cover, the, you know, it's totally mitigated by the, by the size, and making the, the project smaller really doesn't help. I don't know if that helps you with that explanation? This is the, the back elevation, this is how the, the project hits, the heights back in here are like twenty feet, fifty, twenty-five feet along the back. This line right here is the, the same line as the Coast Highway. We did an analysis on site, we put up story polls, had all the neighbors look, we took photographs, and we went around to a lot of neighbors, and, and they were so kind to let us take pictures from their lots to make sure that we were, we thought we were doing the right thing, and we, we were anyway convinced that we were. This is a photograph from three eleven Kings Road, and this is the site study analysis from that. Here's the building. There is the, if you were standing up, actually, I think we calculated it as sitting down, your view is clean over the building, and, yeah, the water is over here, there's some other buildings in your front, but it has no impediment whatsoever to any water view or the horizon. This is a view from three oh three Kings Road, similar, actually, in your packet, this photograph does show poles, but you can see these are the, those are the streetlights right here. Okay? And there's a very hard-to-see pole right, right there, it's about this high from this viewpoint. And again, this is the study from that residence. It's a similar, this is a shot from one oh five Kings Road, similar. This, this is a, this is one of the story poles right there. So, you see, that's the top of that, one, one, the top of the ridge of the parking structure canopy over the ramp, which, when perceived, is not even as high as some of these. And of course, all these telephone poles will be removed. That's a study of that view corridor. And this is a, a view from the window of four eleven, four eleven Kings Road. We were very concerned about this view because it's an oblique view to the project, and this is the view that encouraged us to put that mitigating roof over the backside of the one side of the parking structure, so that it further blocks any view of any car on that structure. There's a tabulation in your packet that goes over all the numbers of the project. This is the gross areas, is a little over nineteen thousand square feet, the, the net leasable area is like eighteen thousand, and there's about twelve hundred square feet of service area, which is enclosed, which, again, doesn't need to be by code. And that's it, that's our presentation. I'm open to questions. We love this project, I'm really excited about it. I think that it fits well within Mariners Mile and, and suits all the parameters and, and I think what the city's been looking for, for this site.
How many tandem car spaces do you have in the garage now?
Tandem, tandem spaces, probably a twenty, who is it? There's forty? Forty-eight tandem, yeah.
Forty-eight tandem?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I've got twenty, I'm in two levels of twenty, yeah. And the, the project's designed so it's flexible, so that it self-parks during the day when there, and there's been a very thorough parking study about how it all operates, which, which we can go into, but the project self-parks probably till four or five o'clock, including, and a lot of the tandem spaces are set for employees on the upper level.
Got a question. No one's answered Councilwoman Gardner's question, which I thought was interesting, and that is, the, when the self-parking ends at four o'clock, how does that work with the valet parking? And if people leave their cars there, are they going to get towed away? I mean, how are you going to manage all that?
Do you want, you want, we have the parking expert here, you want, you want to, I mean, I could turn it, because I might answer your question wrong. He's thought about it more.
I'm going to introduce Ken Knight from Sunset Parking, but he also works for me. I have the project at Billy's Chart House. We have the exact same condition, that at a certain time, it converts to valet. Anybody who's self-parked on that site remains, period, even if it's overnight, and Ken will be, he'll share that with you, but no, no, there are, there is no such thing as towing in a valet parking situation.
Good evening. My name is Ken Knight, and I'm with Sunset Parking, and I did, I authored the parking management plan for the project. I think to answer your question, you typically put something on the signage to deter it, to help the transition, but it, it wouldn't make a lot of sense to actually tow vehicles, in that they'll be patrons of the facility, and typically, you know, you just don't do that in that situation. So, it's more of a deterrent than anything else. And I would agree with Mr. Ridway's comments earlier, that this plan was really written for max capacity. I believe from other projects that I've helped operate through the years, that there's not really going to be a capacity problem at the bulk of the time. There's really just a few key times, like Saturday night, as we've all been out to restaurants in the area, where you really get near-peak capacity, but on a Tuesday, it's, it's a very, much lower volume of vehicles coming through the facility, and you really just don't have a problem. You could probably do self-park much more than is laid out in the plan.
Councilman Rosansky?
Are you versed in the tandem parking as well, or is that not-
I am.
So, how is that supposed to work with the employees? Like, they come to work at a different time? I mean, is the valet going to park the employee cars as well and move them, or?
No, typically, you would assign the same tandem stalls within the same suite or tenant space, and the employees can manage that themselves. They'll help each other out on getting in and out of spaces.
So, the cooks in the kitchen cooking, and the waiter's going to go home now, and so the cook's got to leave the kitchen to go move his car so the waiter can leave?
Well, typically, it doesn't work out quite like that. They will get together, and the kitchen staff's going to come in early, they're going to stay the longest of the, they will probably park together. The management team is going to be there longer than anybody, they'll park together, and the waitstaff kind of comes and goes, and, and they can work together on getting each other in and out.
Well, I own a restaurant myself, not a fine dining establishment-
Sure.
But, but things happen during the day, and people have to come and go, and it seems kind of a, I mean, I guess you work in the parking field, I mean, is this a, a typical situation in centers where you're working at? And maybe you can give me some idea, like, what type of centers?
I, I have a little different method that I operate in a lot of our other centers, and that would be, we typically put the rest, the restaurant employees in the back spaces, and then park the valet cars on front of them, because we're always out there to be able to move them, and I think with some of the Newport Beach city guidelines, you know, that, that isn't the way that it wanted to go. So, you know, I would typically do it a little bit differently, put those in the back spaces, because they sit there pretty much the entire shift of lunch or dinner, and we would always be there to be able to move a car as necessary.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There might be a lot of issues with this property, but tandem is not one of them. My office on the peninsula, we have eight tandem stalls, we've had them since nineteen eighty, and we park visitors behind the tandem, so they're trandom stalls, and we simply don't have a problem.
Well, that's one office. I mean, we're here, we're dealing with multiple businesses here with multiple hours, so I don't think it's quite apples to apples. I just see some issues here.
We have one office, six apartments, and one restaurant.
I operate at two other similar-type retail mixed-use facilities. One, Delmar Plaza, and, down in Delmar, with, which has three large restaurants and a lot of retail. We also have all the employees on site, and we do a lot of tandem parking. We really have never had an issue, again-
Here's our assistant city manager.
Is that in his job description? There was no abuse of that lizard, was there? Okay.
For staff, what I'm hearing from the proponent is that the, it can be flexible, that there'd be self-parking, and self-parking might continue longer, could, will work longer, but if this is conditioned, then they will have to do valet parking at whatever hour we say, no matter, unless they come back to the city? How is, is that, I mean, how much flexibility is there?
This valet plan was based on kind of worst-case scenario, assuming that the total restaurant square footage proposed is actually developed, this kind of peak operating conditions. The city traffic engineer reviewed the valet plan and overall parking management plan, and we went through a number of revisions with Ken Knight here, and this is a solution that was deemed acceptable, and that would operate efficiently. With regard to the tandem parking for employees-
Wait, I, I don't think you understood me.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Say, we're going to, we approved everything that's here, and they did what Mr. Ridway said, and a financial institution came in instead of some restaurants. Your parking needs are very different all of a sudden, but they, we still have in here that at five o'clock, you're supposed to do valet parking. Is that, does with it, or do they come back to us, or do they have flexibility within this plan?
Yeah, within the conditions of approval, we built in some flexibility for the applicant to prepare a revised valet parking management plan that would have to then be reviewed by the city traffic engineer.
Any other questions on the parking management plan?
So, do I get from your comments that you think you could design the tandem parking in a better way than the city staff required you to?
I, I'm just stating how I've operated at other properties and, and found the most successful method.
Okay.
Well, personally, I would agree with him, because at least it's the valet there that's going to go move it, and not some other employee who might, may or may not be working or have different hours. I mean, Jaime, why don't you, is there a reason why we prefer two employees to park behind each other as opposed to the valet parking a car behind and moving it?
You know, I know the traffic engineer worked extensively on this, however, the-
Is the traffic engineer here, is Tony here?
No. The traffic engineer was acceptable with employees parking in tandem, so long as the tandem spaces were assigned to the same suite, so that was one of their conditions.
Honestly, I, I believe it could work either way very successfully, as, when you're running a business, the employees will adapt to the situation. You know, I think you could have it operate in the tandem stall as proposed, with the employees parking in front and behind each other. It would, it would work successfully. The employees would learn the situation and learn how to work it out.
What's to prevent the employees from just parking in the regular spaces that you're not going to tow from?
You know, you, you get to know the employees' vehicles pretty, pretty early, and, you know, you just work with the restaurant management and the property management to, to have people park in the right place.
Well, again, I own a restaurant, and there's half a dozen other restaurants in there, and we have a parking management plan for our shopping center-
Sure.
And I guarantee you that, I know my own employees have to chase after it. I mean, it's an ongoing thing, and if you're not on it, then rapidly you deteriorate.
And during different times of the year, you'll find things kind of fall back, where exactly what you're talking about tends to happen a little bit more, when there's not a lot of parking pressure on the property. And then, as you move into the summertime, where the volume really picks up, you know, the restaurants, they want people in their business, they're going to do what they need to do with their employees to, to get people in the right places. So, I, I think, you know, that does happen when there's not really a parking problem. If there's a parking problem, everybody's united on making sure it's optimized in, in the best way. In my experience.
Thank you. My experience is a little different, but-
Okay.
Your, your light's still on, are you thinking?
I'm sorry?
Are your lights still on, are you thinking?
No.
Okay. All right. Any further questions of the applicant? Okay, seeing none, then we'll open this up-
I just had one more.
Excuse me?
Is, is there anything further that can be done for that, that feature? You know what I mean, Todd? As you, yeah, I mean, anything you can do there that might be able to mitigate that?
Well, the drop lane is, it currently exists as a, a light standard there. The light standard will be moved because the drop lane is moving thirty feet, and we're actually, Mr. Fluter next door is allowing us some land to, to accommodate that drop lane. I, I think the drive apron on the exit should be designed to let bicycles go on the sidewalk. The light standard will no longer, actually, there's three different poles there. There's a light standard, there's a, a, a Caltrans sign, and then there's another sign. So, what we need to really do is clean up the sidewalk, create an easy transition, because when it pinches right there between the lane and the, and the project, if they can just scoot up to the sidewalk and it's a clean sweep along there, then they can drop out of a driveway into the bike lane.
Okay.
So, that, that, I mean, we're looking at that, that is, as was stated, we're at the mercy of Caltrans, but the, with the public works director, we can look at the light standard and the placement of signs out there. That, that's really a problem there, no doubt about it.
Is that, is that okay for bicyclists going fifteen or twenty miles an hour to sweep up on a sidewalk and down?
Actually, they're illegal on sidewalks in Newport Beach, so, you know what? We have to create a safety condition there, and we're working on it, and it can be done, but there's no pedestrians in there, just the homeless coming out from behind.
But, but Dover is one of those intersections that we're looking at, so we might want to extend our glance further up as we do that.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? All right, then we'll open it up for public comment, anyone wishing to make a comment on this application. And the comment time period limit is five minutes.
My name is, my name is Ned McKeon. I'm the owner of Mariners Mile Square. It's the development on Coast Highway between Riverside and Tustin Avenue, and I am also the chairman of the Mariners Mile Business Owners Association. My association is open to all commercial property owners on the mile, and members, it contains most of them. This district is crying out for revitalization, and there is a logical sequence to how it should happen. It should begin with the oldest properties, the least attractive, and the most visible. That's the Mariners, Mariners Point parcel to a T. Residents have complained for years about the appearance of this particular parcel, and now you have a chance to transform it and to allow revitalization to work its way inward in the district. It was only two years ago that this council was confronted with a condition that made the community ashamed of itself for the graffiti and for the vagrants that lived on this parcel. You had to go to City Department- You had to go to city departments for some arm twisting of the previous owner to get him to clean it up minimally. Now it can be something that we will be proud of, and I hate to think of where we would be if this project were denied. I also don't need to remind anyone of the uncertain times we live in. What are people doing with their money? They're buying gold and treasury bills. Who is willing to invest? Who is willing to take a risk on the future? Well, these developers are. And I hope that you will grant their appeal.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a comment? You don't hesitate, just come on down.
Good evening. My name is Jim Kretzenzi. I'm a resident of Newport Coast. And I wanted to say that as someone who's lived here for nearly two decades, I'm thrilled that this team is, is going to create what I think is going to be a terrific gateway leading into the Mariners Mile. So as a resident, I'm really thrilled to see that this, this project has, has finally reached the level where it has. I'm also a, I spent thirty years of my career in the retail real estate industry, and I've been watching this project very closely. And I will tell you that I think this project is going to be very well received by the retail and restaurant community. So if there's any hesitation about the owner's ability to be able to attract the quality of tenants that you think this project warrants and deserves, I can tell you from my professional opinion, I think that they will have no problem getting the right quantity and quality of tenants that will set the tone for the Mariners Mile for many years to come. And I look forward to working with Mr. Ridgeway and his team as we move forward with this project. Thank you.
Jim, does your employer know you're down here speaking favorably about a competing site?
Oh, well, you and I haven't spoken in any detail in a while, but I'm no longer with the Irvine Company.
Oh, okay.
But as, as you and I have known, we've worked together over the years, and I've been involved in the leasing and merchandising of Cornell Mar Plaza, Crystal Cove Promenade, Fashion Island, Newport Coast Shopping Center. And I'm very impressed with the level of detail that Mr. Ridgeway and his team have executed on this, and it's at the highest level. So I'd like to, I'd like to just give you my endorsement for the project.
Good evening. My name is Maury DeWald. I live at three oh three Kings Road. I'm right above the project. It's a very interesting project, but I'd like to give you a little history. And I, you guys have history, but, but at the- I have a very good point. I wasn't aware of it. But, and if, if I could have the schematic, it just outlines the, you know, from the street, the first one you were talking about, you got, you got the retail, and then you've got the parking facility, kind of the rough plan. No, I want, I want to see, I want, I want, I want, I want to see the entire project. There's, there's another slide that's better. Was the first one you put up? One of the first ones? That's not it. It was the map, I think, yeah, I think it's the map.
You had the cities.
Uh, no, I want it, I want it right on it. We're getting close. That's, that's, that's pretty good. Anyway, the point I'm trying to make here on, on just this small point, is that apparently twenty-five, thirty years ago, there was a, there was an owner there. And Caltrans came on and said, hey, you know, we need to put a third lane in here. So that, so that owner sold for profit to Caltrans. And this planning commissioner brought this up. He said, so, so therefore, Mr. Developer Ridgeway, my neighbor at three eleven or wherever it is, right next door, basically, he says, you know, you can't, you can't even think about going zero lot line, taking this thing right on in, because basically, it's, it's a very small lot. It used to be a fairly decent lot, but now it is very, it's handicapped. You just don't have the space. The other, the other part of the issue that, that I think is important really, is that we're talking about twenty thousand square feet of retail and restaurant, which on its face is good. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. But the way it's poured into this property from the, from the, from the front square inch, all the way to a zero lot line in the back, as far back as they can go, they're way over the height limitation, and then guess what? He's pouring a hundred and fifty car structure right next door, which by the way is right below my house, right below his house, and, 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 and that's about thirty-five feet, thirty-six feet, maybe thirty-seven feet high. When I go down, when I go down to the lower section of my property, I'm looking right into that. There's no question about that. Furthermore, the west side of the structure, the west side of the structure, the left-hand side here, we understand has what they call a soft shell, or a soft opening. And there are set, there are eleven more lots owned by Mr. Fluter. And so therefore, and, and, and the lots there, from that point forward, all the way down to McDonald's, those are pretty good lots. Those are great lots. So if you're gonna put a project this size and magnitude, the better spot to have probably placed it would have been on, on a larger piece of land further on down towards the McDonald's. Nevertheless, it's, we think, while, on the one hand, it looks like an interesting project, and it is, the parking, in my opinion, blows it up, and it's just way too big for that small parcel. Thank you very much.
You mean the size of the parking building?
The size, the size of the project, including the parking structure, fifty thousand square feet, we don't talk about that.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Portem, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stephen James. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for thirty-one years. I own businesses in San Ana, Costa Mesa. I own commercial property in Newport Beach, and I have a home in Big Canyon, Newport Beach. I've reviewed the plans and the drawings for the Vodols development, and I think it is a massive improvement for the city. We had, some years ago, I recall, we had somebody took Fluter's lots and Vodols' lots, excuse me. Some years ago, we had an applicant who had planning permission from you to develop the whole strip, I believe. And it was going, I think, subtrading parking, this, that, this, that. It isn't feasible. It's a terribly skinny strip of land. I've developed properties myself. It's very, very difficult to develop. I think the Vodols are doing the city a big favor. And frankly, I think they're out of their minds putting that much money into it, because it'll take them a lifetime to get it back. But nonetheless, it will be a massive, massive improvement for the city, and I think without any hindrance, you should help them any which way you can. And with respect to an observation Mrs. Gardner had, the strip of land has been vacant for an awful long time. Logistically, it's difficult to develop such a piece of land, it really is. The gentleman from Kings Road, I hear his comments, but it has to go from zero lot line. There's, it's, it's an impossibly skinny lot to develop. This is as tasteful as you're gonna get. It looks like a small, in my view, Mediterranean village, if you will. It is not one big facade. It's a lot of individual-looking buildings. It's as tasteful and well-balanced and well-thought-out as you can possibly do. It's frankly a marvelous architectural job, in my, in my opinion. And I would encourage you to, to develop it. Mr. Rosansky, you made a comment about the parking, and I have to take sides with this gentleman who runs a parking company. I have a property that has, anybody who has a restaurant in Newport Beach or these, these areas has a parking issue, period. And I have parking stalls, and there's other slots, if you will, that trap, the first cars in are trapped in. And it works, if you have a good parking team, a good parking management team, in my experience, it works very, very well. I take your point, it's not perfect. But for the most part, a good, a good management team, they, it's what they do, and they do a very, very good job handling such a problem. Thank you for your time.
I'm Nancy Moran Sanchez, and I have no hidden agenda. I just live here. I drive down PCH. And I come to that intersection, and it just breaks my heart to see that piece of property. It, it's a disgrace for this great city to have a piece of property, prominent property, that lays there abandoned. And I think this project, it absolutely looks beautiful. I admire them for taking it on, taking, having the courage to do that, and it'll be a great gift to the city. I think it'll be wonderful. Thank you.
My name is Cameron Mirage. I own the lot one hundred Kings, right above the subject, proposed project, next to the gentleman we talked earlier, Mr. DeWald. Due to the limited amount of time, what I'd like to do is organize my thoughts, and I want to share with you in a letter form, read this to you, to be able to impart as much information as possible regarding this. The issue is not, to me, whether or not it would be desirable to replace the existing site with a, a new project. That's not even the question. The question is the negative impact of all the variances that is requested on this. And I'd like to start by sincerely commending the planning commission members for reviewing and addressing all parties' concerns on the twenty-third. And I believe that they all understood the magnitude of the negative impacts that this development would inflict upon the neighborhood properties and the community at large, while on the twenty-third, the developer and the architect attempted to minimize the negative impact as best as they could. As a result, with thorough consideration of all issues, they came up with excellent findings to avoid excessive negative impact from this project and denied all the requested variances. I trust that your honor and the council members will give this development a thorough review as well. As I stated in my June twenty-third letter that prepared with the assistance of professional Newport Beach architects and engineers, that the city staff now has a, has a copy of, that the, while, while we acknowledge the beneficial impact for the city, and, but it will have less of an, less of an impact if it is implemented within the allowed provisions of the zoning ordinances. I understand this is why we have these, these codes and regulations so that development does not get out of hand, ignoring the general public's welfare and environment impacts for self-interest, I agree. However, along with my neighbors, and again, with the assistance of professional architects in Newport Beach and engineers, we have determined this development as proposed, with all the horizontal and vertical increases, will undoubtedly increase the negative impact on the properties outlined in my letter of June twenty-third. Regrettably, I am deeply concerned and disappointed with the city planning staff's support of this project with unreasonable variances on a very small parcel of land and a fifty thousand square foot parking structure. I share the reasoning that the city's goal is to improve Mariners Mile corridor, to redevelop the current dilapidated property. However, this must not be accomplished on the expense of inflicting increased negative impacts on the neighboring properties. Further, the initial study under SECO did not address some of the issues such as shadow and noise level correctly. This was evident during the last public hearing, when a, the environmental consultant did not even realize that the proposed development with a thirty-five-foot retaining wall could actually have a shadow on the properties of the neighbors as well as my own. Because we are immediately north of this development, in addition, the staff approved this project despite too many unknowns and assumptions as to documented, as documented in their findings with a lot of ifs. I do not believe this is how the intent of the law and the regulation should be implemented. I urge the city council to review this project as thoroughly as planned, as planning commission has done, for which we are very grateful for. We trust that with all the issues considered, this development's variances could all be justifiably denied as it was unanimously done by the planning commission. The homes on the bluff that are impacted by this are multi-million dollar homes, and contrary to what was stated, if you were there when the stakes, the polls were up, the views of the harbor views, the immediate harbor views are impacted, while the distant ocean views are not impacted. And that would definitely have substantial impact on the values. And that's somewhat evidenced by the fact that the one oh four Kings has been in escrow three times in the past year, has fallen out because of the concerns of the people who have tried to buy this, their fact, therefore impacting its potential value. For your consideration, I have added chronological response to the rebuttal response from the developer, developer to the issue that was raised, and they have listed them below. They are consisting of the mass of roof structure higher than the allowed height, and a five foot closer than the allowed setback is still in front of our property, and we'd be blocking the view of open space, which is negative impact, which has a negative impact. Adding a partial rooftop structure may screen some of the vehicles, but it will increase building height and subsequently create more shadow on the property. This is, again, partial structure and will not block airborne noise. These are negative impacts.
Sir, your time is up. Will you be finishing shortly?
Just give me another minute, yes.
If you can finish in less than a minute, that would be good.
I will do my best. It seems like the environmental study included, environmental study including, including its response to comments has failed again to understand this sun development is changing angle throughout the year. If you look into a model of this condition, any object, on an average throughout the year, will put equal to half of its height as shadow to its north side. In this case, on an average, about twenty feet of the properties will be in the shadow of the building. This is another negative impact. I urge you to review some of these responses, specifics, that I've had developer, I've had architects and engineers go through the pain of putting together at great expense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I know it's late, and I'm really getting tired. Honorable mayor, distinguished members of the city council, my name is Albert Hannah. I live in Newport Beach. I've grown, grown up in the city. I've driven that PCH thousands of times, coming from Cornell Del Mar, going back and forth. Really tired seeing this, this lot in the horrible condition that's in, Christmas trees or pumpkin or graffiti and, and all. This is the entrance of Newport Beach. Thank God, somebody came to the table with that much money to make us look beautiful and be proud of our city in Newport Beach. This is like the city of Newport Beach is a groom, and this project is like the bride, and we're picking on the bride. So somebody, you know, I mean, we can have a lot of negative, you know, thoughts, but I think we should think positive. This is gonna bring employment, it's gonna bring taxes, it's gonna make the city look beautiful, they're gonna do a waterfall or some kind of waterworks. I'm sure there'll always be a party pooper, but I think at the end of the day, you know, we really should look positive, and I really urge every one of you to pass this project tonight, because we badly need it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. How many more people wish to make comments? Oh, boy, let's, let's come on down here, so we reduce the transit time. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Laura Tarbox, and I'm the executor and trustee of the Frank Eisenrath Estate, which owns the property at one oh four Kings, which is right on the corner above the property, the one that Mr. Mirage referred to, that has been for sale and fallen out of escrow three times in the last ten months. I've been trying to sell the property for the beneficiaries for the past year, and once people have looked at this project, they've gotten very concerned about the mass and the effect that it's gonna have on our property. There were no photos taken from my property, as it does look right over the couple of feature and, and the big part of the restaurant. We're concerned about the impact of outdoor seating potentially at the restaurant, just the restaurants in general right there under the houses. The homeowners up there are concerned about a situation like the one in Crystal Cove, where the late-night noise impact from Javier's and Mastro's has made all the homeowners want to move, but they've been unable to sell their properties. The other situation that comes to mind is in Laguna Beach with- The other situation that comes to mind is in Laguna Beach with the restaurant, Mozambique, thank you, that turned into more of a nightclub and has caused a lot of problems in the neighborhood. I want to see a development there, too. I've been driving by that corner for 30 years and are really anxious to see something, but don't understand why there have to be so many variances and it has to exceed the footprint by so much in height and size. And the three-story parking structure I'm concerned is just a bad precedent and far too much, far too close to the houses, and that everybody else has pretty much set it up in the neighborhood. It's just too big of a project for the space, and we really would like to see some more modifications. Thank you.
Honorable Mr. Mayor and Ms. Mayor Pro Tem and council members, my name is David Hartman. I live at 1720 Kings Road. I've been there for 13 years, living in the community. I have, I am a licensed contractor of 23 years. I've run my own business successfully for 23 years. I've reviewed this project immensely in full detail, and I think that it'll be nothing but a wonderful addition to the community. This is an absolute eyesore and an aberration on the beautiful city of Newport Beach. I walk by it, run by it, my son and I work out by it every day, and we see this. This project needs to be approved. I applaud, I applaud Councilmember Selich on his appeal for this to be reviewed. And if we take a look at the comments of some of my fellow residents, if it was up to them, we would never get anything approved. I've lived there for 13 years, and I've watched every single thing get shot down because they just don't want change. We must embrace change. As we did with my fellow member, Councilman Hill, Councilmember Hill, and his beautiful home and the way he built it, I get a chance to look at that every day, and it's fantastic. And that has helped my property go up. Mariners Point is going to help the value of Kings Road. It's not going to impede people from not being able to buy and/or sell, most importantly, sell their properties. The people that are griping about selling their properties, they ought to look at Wall Street and look at the economic issues that we're having right now. But anything the Verdolt's put their hands on, anything that they, with this team does work with, is going to come out to be an immaculate project, and they are going to comply with the city. And they're going to bring jobs, they're going to bring taxes, they're going to bring opportunities for us, and most importantly, they're going to make Mariners Mile beautiful. And they're going to take these horrible vagrants out of our city. They're going to put a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful shopping center right there where we need it most. And we need to, like I said, we need to appeal this, and we need to approve this, and we need to take the initiative to help Kings Road out. And as a resident, I've watched our property values drop, and I'm tired of it. This project is going to make our property values go up, and that's what it's going to do, and nothing but. And as a licensed contractor of 23 years, valid in the state of California, I have looked through the project immensely, and it is solid. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tony Shaw. I live at 204 Tustin Avenue. I've lived there for 27 years, and my home currently overlooks Mariners Village. I'm excited about this project. I think it'll be an asset to our city. I'm excited about having the entrance to Mariners Mile improved, and I think it'll be an excellent gateway, and I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I'm very impressed with the team against the people that are objecting to this project. Seems like one person comes up and two follow-ups.
May I have your name, sir, please?
Tom Lally. I'm sorry, 104 Kings Place. This project took them a year and a half to present, and it took them a year and a half to come up with five, seven major violations, seven major variances they're looking for. It was presented just two weeks ago to the planning commission, just two weeks ago, and unanimously, five individuals, one reclused himself and another was absent, of the planning commission unanimously said no to this project. I believe this is a way of circumventing the process. They presented a plan two weeks ago that was different from the one they're presenting now. I believe they presented it to have it knocked down, I'm sorry, I believe this, but I really do, knocked down so they could appeal it and come back here. Well, when you appeal something, it should be on the basis of what they presented there, not a change. We have a right to have that go back to the planning commission and for reconsideration there. I love Newport Beach. I love my home. And we're directly over that section that they're presenting. When they build it, it will be 50 foot in back of my home and 20 foot down, and I ask each of you, if you would just envision your own properties, to imagine, what, 50 foot back, 20 foot down with a parking lot, cars, alarms, everything else. I know it doesn't impact a lot of the people, like the gentleman here that lives in another part of the city, you know, thinks it's wonderful, but it does impact us. So thank you very much.
Any further comments? Okay, let's not hesitate.
Honorable Mayor, Pro Tem, council members, my name is John Sturgis, and I live with my family at 601 Cliff Drive in Cliff Haven for over 25 years. I'm proud to say that I've been president and on the board of the Cliff Haven Community Association over a period of those years. I have to stand here before the council and before the public to tell you that I am totally encouraged and proud that Todd Ridgeway and these people would take the initiative, as was said before, to develop a site that has been a blight on our neighborhood ever since I've lived in that community. I've been a part of many council deliberations over developments, from Castaways to the Balboa Bay Club to Taco Bell, just to name a few. And I defer to you as council people, council members representing the public, to mitigate this project and to approve this project tonight. It's imperative that you do this. This has been a blight on our community for so many years, and I take exception to a lot of the council members that say traffic is the microissue. There's no problem with traffic. What this project's going to bring is a community center. There are 360 homes in Cliff Haven. There are over 119 homes in adjacent Castaways. There's over 300 homes in Bay Shores. Add that up in terms of homes and families, that they'll have walking distance to a community center for restaurants, for retail, that will bring families and community together. This is more than a development, an investment by this family. This is more than a development by Todd Ridgeway and his team. This is a community center, much needed in this community. And as stated earlier, it's going to bring employment, it's going to bring a center of excellence, it's going to bring a gateway to Newport Beach that has long, long been overdue. So I encourage all of you tonight, every one of you, to approve this project. Thank you.
Okay, next person, please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I live at 411 Kings Road.
May I have your name, please?
My name is Jack Kiurlings, and I'm located three doors from the developer, and if you go on the other side of his house, or you go this side of his house on which I live, you'll find that everybody was opposed to this project. He's the only one, but everyone that's within the 300-foot limit on the rim is opposed to the project. Principal reason is that it's overbuilt for the size of the property. It's now going to have additional commercial floor space, but in order to get the conditional floor space, before it was at 23,000, now they're moving it down to, I think, something around 19,905, but they're taking it away from the buildings that are commercial and putting it into the garage, which means it makes the garage larger. That garage is absolutely huge as far as we're concerned. I mean, it's just an eyesore from our property because we look at it from behind, we don't look at it from the front. The other thing that is of concern is that when you take the footage in the garage, which is 50,000 plus, probably 50,000, I think before it was 274, now it's going to have some additional footage in it because they're bringing in 14 more spaces. And you add that to the 19,000-plus feet that they're going to have for the commercial space, you're coming up with over 70,000 square feet of buildings, brand new, that are going to just cover the property. There's no open space except along the front. The other thing about it is that the noise from the structure, I think, will affect us. They put a roof over about half of the top floor, but the noise will come out through the front. I mean, the grade coming up into the garage was 15 percent, now it's going to be around 13, but even so, when you go up that into a parking structure, you find that you gun your car a little bit more, and we'll hear those noises as they go up. The other thing about the parking structure is there are two entrances, really one entrance and then one exit, but the one entrance also has an exit to it. But the thing that wasn't mentioned earlier is that immediately adjacent to the garage on the development that's there, there's also a driveway. So there's going to be three driveways right there, and I'm concerned about the fact of the traffic accidents. That's where three lanes merge into two, and they all come together just about in that area. And, you know, in time, why, it'll be a real problem, in my opinion. I think that the height limit of 31 feet as now established was a good thing. If you stop to look at the situation between the people on the highway down below and the people on the rim above, the homeowners, there's got to be some kind of a compromise between the two. And when they put that zoning together, it seemed to be equitable from the standpoint that it gave the people down below a chance to do what they need to do for their businesses, and it gave the people up on the roof or on the rim, you know, an opportunity to look out and to see nice things. As far as that view is concerned, Todd said that it didn't really affect a lot of us, but my neighbor who's sitting back there with my wife and I both have, from our deck, if we look off towards the bridge, all we see is that big lighthouse standing up there, that 40-foot structure. And it'll be lit at night, and that means that it won't be very picturesque for us. Also, my neighbor, you know, Evelyn, she looks out that picture window, and she really enjoys the view, but it's going to change quite a bit by reason of the addition. You know, I also want to mention to you the fact that prior to this development, all of the parcels along there, all the way up to McDonald's, there was another developer that had come in, and he put in underground parking. And if we had underground parking on this parcel, it would solve all the problems, but we don't.
Sir, your time is up. Did you have any other finishing comments here?
Yeah, I just have, wonder, give me about a couple of seconds more, but I, my concern too is about the fact that this thing may not be well, may not be well occupied. I give you an example of Triangle Square over in Costa Mesa. You look at Costa Mesa there, you know, the only thing that keeps that place alive anymore are the theaters. And I'm just wondering, you know, and restaurants aren't always the thing that's always going. I mean, you go up on 17th Street here nearby, and Marie Callender's just folded. So I worry about, you know, it being occupied, and that someday it might be an eyesore.
Okay.
Anyway, that's my comment, but I also want to mention that for any reason, should you approve this project, we are in a position to do other things to see that it doesn't go through.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, just one other little thing, too, you know.
Sir, it's getting very late.
One of the guys said that it was going to improve our property value. It's quite evident that it's not going to because Evelyn back there, who has this piece for sale, has come out of escrow three times when they heard about the project.
Sir, I appreciate that you feel passionately about this. You've had plenty of time.
Okay, I'll get out of the way, but I just, I'm very concerned about the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Gavartian. I guess everybody said what they need to say. It's a beautiful project. I can't agree more. And as far as the local residents, I think over time they'll get to like it. And I hope they'll have a parking issue. That means business is prospering, it's going to be good for everybody. That means they're doing something right. So I just don't, I don't see what else I could add. You know, the town needs it, it's going to be really good. It's a lot better than what it is today. I don't know what the neighbors complaining, what they'd rather see Taco Bell there or what, in a corner like that. I think it's going to be just beautiful all around. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Hello, I'm Michelle Bondate. I'm a resident of Newport Beach, Dover Shores, and I have four children and soon to be five. And I want my children to be able to have a nice place to live, a beautiful entrance to where we get off on Dover to our home. I want them to be able to have the opportunity to have a job close to the house, and I just think it's beautiful. I think the eyesore is what it is right now, not a parking structure. I was reassured that the parking structure is going to be landscaped beautifully so you won't even notice that it's even a parking structure. There's going to be a nice waterfall, it's just going to be beautiful, and I wanted this to get started so that it doesn't, we don't have this eyesore for another year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing no further comments, I'll bring it back to council for further discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Kim Frant here. I just wanted to clarify that in the conditions of approval, there is a presumption that restaurants that are open past 11 o'clock or any restaurants that are proposed to go within, within this development will require a conditional use permit, and several of the conditions of approval are written with that in mind, and that we also have an operator's license requirement now within the municipal code, so that would be applied in conjunction with that conditional use permit process. So I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Okay. Councilmember Selich?
Thank you. Guess I'll go first since I'm the one that appealed this up to the council. I appealed it up as the staff said because I thought it deserved the council to take a look at it. It's a critical site, as they mentioned, entrance to Mariners Mile. I've been on the council and the planning commission for 16 years now, and ever since I got on the planning commission, this property has been the subject of discussion. And all we've ever gotten out of it is statuary, sales yards, boat sales, things of that nature, never really got a good project out of it. I think the applicant has done a good job of addressing the concerns that were raised by the residents and the planning commission. I guess really the, you know, the two issues that we have to look at is the, from what I can see, is the size, the bulk of the buildings, and the issue of how the parking is managed. And I'll just say this, that when we approved the general plan for Mariners Mile, we set up these floor area ratios that lead us to these kinds of solutions, and if we follow through with that general plan, we're going to see more proposals similar to this. to this along Mariners Mile. I know there's some concerns expressed about this valet parking operation, but I know in my experience in many urban areas, these types of things are implemented and they work. I think this project is very well-designed. I think it would be a great enhancement to Mariners Mile. And I would be in support of the project. In fact, I'm going to make a motion to approve the project as amended by the applicant. And I would like to suggest, and if there is a second in support for the motion, I have some suggested amendments to the conditions I'd like to make to ensure that we get the quality of the architecture and the landscaping that's been presented in these drawings. These drawings are somewhat conceptual, and I'd just like to have some assurance that we actually get the quality that's being presented to us here.
Could be for, can I ask Ed a question? Can you go over that floor area ratio? Because what you're saying, what I heard you say, but I may not have understood you correctly, is that the general plan basically set up this request for an increase in floor area ratio, and that we can also look for this sort of request as the rest of the area is developed?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying-
Oh, that's right. Okay, thank you.
What I'm saying is when we set up these floor area ratios of .5, we set up situations like this because to park surface parking, and the architect or anyone else here can correct me if I'm wrong on this, typically you end up with a .3 floor area ratio to surface park the shopping center, not a .5 floor area ratio. And yet all along Mariners Mile, we have .5 floor area ratios, which we reduced, and I think they were .75 before we did the last general plan. So, you know, we set up for this kind of development.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Do we have further comment?
I just, I have, still, it seems like it's awfully massive for the thing. Now, I will say to the residents, you know, in Newport, if you're living in Old Newport, unless you're up on the port streets or maybe Newport Coast, we all have to put up with some inconvenience. I live close to the beach. I don't get the view of the beach, but I get all the trash from the beach. I also live close to the commercial area, so I get all the noise from the people coming out of the bars at night, and that's just, that's just part of it. So those of you who live on the bluff above, that's part of being it, that we do have some conflicts, and hopefully we can condition things with our new ordinances so that there's not such an impact. But I would like either Ed or maybe Rush, who are both in building, to explain to me why this doesn't seem, why it doesn't seem to you to be too big for the site, because it just, it just looks huge to me.
Councilmember Hill?
I guess I'll jump to the conclusion that I don't think it's too big for the site. I think that what we're going to see on Mariners Mile is a transition from rural to urban. And we're used to seeing single-story buildings and two-story buildings. And by the zoning that's been put in place, through the general plan that was done six years ago, five years ago now, and the zoning code update to mirror the general plan, we're going to see three-story buildings along that corridor. And I think that this building sets the theme for the quality of what we're looking for. I also think, and I wish we could have the slide back up, that was the superposing of the rendering over the actual photograph of the area. But the advantage, if you will, of scaling the building is because of the bluff. It's cut into the bluff. If the building were standing on flat land with the same elevation behind it, it would seem four times larger than it is now. But with the building being cut into the bluff, it once again scales. And in fact, if you brought that building down to a two-story building, it would look too small. It would not make the statement that we are trying to make to move into Mariners Mile. I think that, and I too live on the hill, and, and, well-
Let's not have conversation between the dais and the audience, please.
And I think that there are some very important elements that need to be taken into consideration to protect the property values and the asset base of those that live on the hill. And I think those are view, glare, noise, and smell. And I think that when I first saw this project as it was first conceived, that it didn't necessarily address all of those issues. But I think today that it does address the issues. And I know, I understand the emotion. I can tell you the emotion at our end of the hill when they put the sewage pump right below my house. That was kind of emotional. But you know what? It's going to be fine. And, you know, and now that we see it coming out of the ground, it's going to work. And so, you know, have they dealt with the view? I believe that they have protected the views. Have they dealt with the glare issue? I've said always, one 100-watt light bulb out in front of our homes on top of that hill destroys your view because it takes your focus to that point, and you lose the panorama in the evening that you are there to enjoy. I think that the parking garage roof and the trellis deals with that with respect to car lights, and I would hope that the conditions that we have placed on this project will allow us to monitor it all the way through the design and the construction to ensure that we don't have lights that are shining up or that are lighting elements that would take care of, that would damage that particular view. I think the noise issue is a very significant issue. We all live above the Coast Highway. Every ambulance, every fire truck, every police car, every motorcycle, every loud racing car that goes by, we hear, and we eventually learn to block out. I looked at the noise study for this piece of property, and I recognize that this property will actually reduce that noise level coming from the Coast Highway. We built our deck on our house for both the purpose of having a larger backyard, but even for a greater purpose to block the noise from the Coast Highway. So I know that that factor works. That is something that we used on our home to reduce the noise impact on our home. And then the smell, that was something that we had a pretty big concern over the project below our house, being a sewer pump station. But you know what? They have technologies today to take care of that. And we had that concern when the McDonald's went in. We had that concern when the Taco Bell went in. All of those concerns proved not to be valid. All very emotional concerns, all very sincere concerns, but they just didn't prove to be valid. And I think that this project has been well-conceived. I like the reduced size of it. I think it is important for the utilization. The size is not reduced for the mass, but I think the design of the property and the positioning of the property is what we're looking for in Mariners Mile. And I think by the zoning changes in general plan that was done six years ago, that this is what we asked for, and we're finally starting to get it.
Okay. Councilmember Curry?
Well, I certainly hope we're seeing the transition between schlock and class, I suppose, is how I would define it. But it was not that many months ago, but this was considered the singly most blighted parcel in the city of Newport Beach. And you heard that, no matter who you talk to, in every corner of the city. And if recent events nationally have taught us anything, it's that legislators at all level, no matter how much we might try, we cannot repeal the basic underlying law of economics. And if we want to have economics that revitalize Mariners Mile, that make this an economically viable place to be, then we need to promote and support developments such as this. I'm very sensitive to the neighbors and their concerns, but I think there's been substantial mitigation built into this plan. And I think when and if a restaurant goes in here, there'll be another opportunity to regulate both the hours and the means of operation for those facilities, whom we consider those permits as well. So I believe those concerns can be addressed both now and in the future. And I believe if we're serious, if we as a council are serious about our stated goals of economic revitalization, and particularly about Mariners Mile, perhaps the most troubled part in a very blessed city, we need to start now. And I think this is the parcel, and this is a project, that will enable us to do that.
Councilmember Daigle?
I think we all want to see revitalization of this property, and we certainly want to give new lift to that area. However, we did have a general plan that was a really big deal in this community in 2006 that passed. And I think we need to keep those promises and those parameters. And it clearly stated what the FAR is and what the height is. So my suggestion would be to have it go back to the planning commission and develop within those parameters, within the .5 and within the height limits. And I feel very strongly that we need to respect the general plan. And I don't see any reason, there's no justification, to go outside of what our general plan allows.
Okay. Councilmember, or Mayor Protim Gardner?
A question for staff during the presentation by the applicant or the appellant. You talked about things that were covered, that if they were, they covered them to cut down on noise and that sort of thing, but if they were uncovered, they would not count as it within the FAR. Is that right?
That's correct.
Do we know about how much that is? I mean, could they just come back, take off a few roofs, and say, now we're at .5? Because that wouldn't necessarily be to the benefit of the residents.
It's approximately 1,200 square feet. It wouldn't bring them down to the level below the .5 FAR. However, that was an option that was explored. And essentially, opening up that service corridor along the rear of the commercial units is feasible. However, staff recommended against that as well because enclosing that corridor does provide additional noise attenuation and shielded lighting from the project.
I guess from my perspective, I, Ed, you mentioned you had some additional conditions for the project. I'd like to understand what you were talking about there.
Okay, well, I won't, I've got them written out here. There's four conditions.
Can you just-
Well, let me just summarize what they are.
Qualitatively describe them, yeah.
Basically, what it is, is that we've got a set of conceptual plans here, which look very nice, but there's not a lot of detail to them. So there's not a lot of detail in them. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to put wording in the conditions that the applicant has to go back to the planning commission with material and color boards, specifications for the window and door treatments, for the elevations of the building itself, and then on the landscaping plan, go back with a detailed landscaping plan that would have the plant species, the sizes, the heights, things of that nature, so that we in effect are getting what I think we're buying into by looking at these pretty pictures, but we don't have the specifications accompanying them here. So the conditions that I've handed out, one of the modifications to the conditions, number one, four, 20, and 21, address those issues.
The second would concur in those recommendations as part of the motion, but perhaps we should ask the applicant if they can live with those.
Very acceptable as proposed.
Also, if, before, there's a vote just on the council resolution, page 48. I think there's a typo in I, one, facts and supportive finding, says the project does involve the elimination of residential units, and I think we meet it does not. I don't know if that makes any big difference, but.
That's correct. That's a typo.
Councilmember Selig, did you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Any other comments? Then I think we should vote.
Prior to reading the vote for approval, there's a resolution and an ordinance, resolution number 2011-86, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, adopting a mitigated negative declaration, finding traffic study number TS 2011-001, in compliance with a traffic phasing ordinance, approving general plan amendment number GP 2010-009, site development review number SR 2010-001, conditional use permit number 2010-024, variance number 2010-004, and parcel map number 2010-008 for a commercial development project located at 100 to 300 West Coast Highway, and ordinance number 2011-22, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, approving code amendment number CA 2010-009, increasing the maximum development limit for property located at 100 through 300 West Coast Highway to 19,905 square feet. And with that, with councilmembers Daigle and Gardner voting no, the motion carries.
That completes our consideration of this item. We now move on to the quarterly business report, item number 14. Maybe wait just a moment or two. Todd, if you guys can carry your conversation on outside, that'd be great.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This is your third quarterly business report, I think, that you've seen. In this case, we've added summaries of what the boards, commissions, and committees are up to. We also updated the section on projects. You see the whole list of projects tracked and updated. This is a quarterly financial review that will have the financial information added in about a month, and that's because in year-end close, it does take us a longer time to pull some things together. But we want to at least keep to our schedule with the quarterly financial report, so we'll do an addendum, probably just post it on the city's website and provide it to you just in hard copy rather than taking it back to council. With that, I don't have any other presentation except to present that to you and welcome your questions.
Okay. Council comments, questions on this item?
Yes, it's really helpful. It just really gives a capsulization of what's going on, and I appreciate that.
I would add to that comment that I think the addition of the summaries on the various boards and commissions was a very strong addition to this document, especially the, it was eye-opening for me, actually, the estimated staff time associated with supporting all of these boards and commissions. It's certainly a significant undertaking on the part of the city to support such a broad and large scale of public involvement in our city, which I think we all agree is very valuable. With regard to the items themselves, I just had a, with regard to item number one, which is the acquisition of Coast Highway, I recognize staff has been diligent in following up on all of this, but this is just taking forever to move along. And, you know, I guess my question is, have we gone to the State Transportation Board for help here? Do we need to see if there is a way to provide some encouragement to the, to Caltrans staff regarding this that seems to have been, ended up on the bottom of someone's priority pile up there for quite a long time? And do we have any, is there any, what other avenues are available to us to move this along that perhaps we've been a little reluctant to explore?
I'll let Steve chime in after I do. It's certainly something we could communicate with our legislators about if we're concerned and see if we could work with it on that end, and then maybe let Steve comment on the CTC or other aspect.
Yeah, well, Caltrans has been really hard to work with as of late with all their cutbacks. And so they've been virtually non-responsive. So I guess, you know, they do report to the governor's office ultimately, so perhaps maybe we need to make some inquiries in Sacramento. And I would agree with Dave, perhaps some legislative contact might be in order if we don't get a response.
Is all the local work done, and it's just up in Sacramento now?
You know, we can't even get a good response on that. They, you know, it depends who you talk to. They say, well, they always, they've sent it up to headquarters, they haven't heard back, and, you know, we've kind of been getting the runaround, so.
Because I know when we did the relinquishment through Corona del Mar, that it was just getting passed from desk to desk to desk to desk, and it just seemed to take forever.
Yeah. I think that's the case. And not only that, it's probably just being delayed because of the lack of staff and people available to work on it.
Councilmember Daigle?
Well, when we had the logjam up at Jamboree to get that necessary certificate, I found Cindy Kwan. She was pretty helpful. You probably already talked to her, but she was a great resource. a great resource.
Is she still, is she still on point here for us, for Caltrans?
Yes, she is.
Okay. You know, I did have another question or two on this, and, but along these lines, I want to encourage us to explore other alternatives here to move this thing along. There was some conversation about perhaps narrowing our conversation for now to acquire Newport Boulevard ahead of the remainder of the application. Is that still something that you think is a possibility?
Yes. In fact, we've even discussed that with them about splitting that out. And I think they do see that as something that can happen a little quicker. There's a lot less involved, because it's a very short segment, and they're happy to give us those signals, and we want them bad.
Yeah. Well, but why do you think you'll get any more response on that gambit than you have on the other?
I think because the big issue we have on the main line on Coast Highway is that we have to calculate, they have to calculate what it takes to bring the highway up to a good state of repair. And there's, there's a lot of issues regarding drainage in West, West Newport area that need to be handled, that need to be addressed. We found when we had talked to them last, they hadn't even inspected most of those drainage facilities in West Newport. The segment, essentially, in the lower part of Newport Boulevard, is virtually no improvements except for pavement and traffic signals. So it's rather simple if we want to move that forward.
Okay.
Is the bridge over the bay, is that part of the relinquishment still?
The bridge over the back bay?
Yeah.
Well, that's to be discussed. We've told them we don't want to take that, and their position has been, they would like us to take that. You know, I think we still need to find out what, we've asked them for maintenance costs, we haven't gotten those. So, you know, I think before, we need to get all the infacts before, so we can make an informed decision on that.
Okay. Well, I think you get the sense of it. There's a lot of encouragement here, if there's some other alternatives that we can pursue, you know, again, on top of the diligence that you've already exhibited on this. So, all right, that's my only comments on this. Do we have any other comments? All right. Do we have comments?
Question is, what kind of announcement is being made or access for the public of this quarterly report?
Don't see Tara behind me, but I know that we've put the past ones up on the website, so we place it there in a relatively easy-to-find location so that people could follow it that way.
I just, I think it's a great thing. And this combined with the newsletter, I think, from the city manager's office are two great communication tools to the public.
All right. I'll take comment from the public on this agenda item. Anyone wish to make a comment? Seeing none. I guess this is just a receive and file. And so we'll be done with that item. Lastly, the response to the Orange County Grand Jury.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is a requirement that we respond to grand jury reports when they direct us to do so. They directed us to the city of Newport Beach to respond to their recent study on compensation in Orange County cities. I have a draft response prepared for you. Welcome your comments or changes to that. And if you approve that, we would send it under the mayor's signature in time for their deadline, which is September 7th.
I move that we approve.
We have a motion. You got to be quick around here, Leslie. All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion from the dais?
No, sorry.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
Mayorhead and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I read the grand jury report when it was first mentioned in the papers a few weeks ago. And I think it might have been helpful to indicate in the staff report where it can be found, which is namely at oczgrandjury.org. It's difficult to judge a response without knowing what is being responded to. And although I generally admire the job our city manager is doing, I'm frankly a little bothered by this response. Whatever else we may think of them, I think we should start with the assumption that the grand jury is sincerely trying to make suggestions for better government in Orange County. In this report, somewhat inspired by last year's scandals in the city of Bell, they found three main areas in which they thought cities could improve. Number one was the ease with which residents could locate readily understandable information regarding how much their employees and officials are being paid. Number two was making more visible the actual contracts underlying that pay. And number three was providing better explanations of the rationale behind what appear to be disproportionately large salaries for comparable jobs in different cities. We were criticized in each of those areas, and that has led to a very defensive response. But frankly, I think most of the criticisms were well-deserved. And even if the report had been completely flattering, I think it should have inspired us to ask if we couldn't do even better than we are. Regarding making compensation amounts readily available, for example, we might have checked how that is being done in our neighboring city of Costa Mesa. I am certainly not suggesting that Costa Mesa is perfect, but if one clicks on the transparency link on their homepage, one easily finds each councilman and each and every employee listed by name telling how much they make, clearly distinguishing their base compensation from the amounts the city contributes towards their benefits, and what those benefits consist of. There is nothing remotely comparable to that on our own city website. Instead of belittling the report, shouldn't we have been asking ourselves why we couldn't do at least as well as Costa Mesa, or perhaps even better? Regarding the visibility of employee contracts, I find incredible the response at the very bottom of page five, which says that anyone with competent computer skills can locate and display the Newport Beach city manager's current contract in less than 10 seconds using Google. 10 seconds is very short. I am willing to believe that I am incompetent, for I tried that experiment and it failed for me. But even worse in my view, if I type the word "city manager contract" not in Google, but in the search box on our own city website, which would seem like a more logical place to me, I come up with nothing at all. Now, I admit the grand jurors themselves are not very good at all about making known who they are or how much they are paid. And none of the proceeding is meant to say that our city website does not have its goods points, or that our city staff is not making a sincere effort to make information readily available to the public. But the question is, couldn't we do a lot better? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comment on this agenda item? All right. Seeing none. Bring it back to council for a vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. That deals with our regular business. Do we have any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. We'll move to adjournment, in this time, in the memory of former city manager of Newport Beach, Kevin Murphy.
Newport Beach resident and former Newport Beach city manager Kevin Murphy passed away on July 21st. His loss has been felt throughout our organization and our community, as Kevin was a highly respected leader with a keen ability to connect with and inspire those around him. This is evident in the innumerable lives he touched, both professionally and personally. Kevin was a Southern California native and a graduate of UCLA. He spent the first 22 years of his career working in local government, beginning in Walnut and Stanton, and later moving on to the city of Lancaster. At the age of 29, Kevin became city manager of Alhambra, and one, and one of the youngest city managers in the state of California. After nine years in Alhambra, he joined Newport Beach as city manager and served our community for nearly a decade. Kevin left the city of Newport Beach in 1998 and joined the staff of Public Agency Retirement Services to lead its consulting division. He was later promoted to serve as the company's chief operating officer. Throughout his career, Kevin remained an avid Bruin fan, athlete, and family man, dedicated to pursuing new adventures and sharing in and supporting those of his wife and daughters. Kevin is survived by Tina, his wife of 30 years, daughters Amy and, Amy, excuse me, Amy Wallace, and Jenna Curtis, and his father Warren, his sister Melinda Wise, and a host of extended family, friends, and colleagues.
We also have two other residents, not residents, but one resident that I'd like to remember also, if we may.
Certainly.
The one is, the first is Robert, Bob Sattler, a longtime real estate broker and mortgage finance specialist in Newport Beach. He died at the age of 90. He came to California at the age of three, and he volunteered for the Navy in the outbreak of World War II, where he served in the South Pacific. His ship was Kamikaze, and he suffered an injury that put him in the hospital for six months, but came back, recovered, made his home in Newport Beach. And after he retired, this is where I knew him, from Sattler Mortgage Company, he took up bicycling. And I met Bob when he was in his 80s, and he was doing the Pyrenees. I mean, he was just, just amazing. He was the slimmest, fittest man that you could ever see. He is survived by his wife Nancy, and children Nancy, Stephen, Kathy, Sarah, Rob, and Jane, and Carol, and nine grandchildren, and soon to be eight great-grandchildren. And the other man, Erwin Haydock, I don't know if any of you know him. He wasn't a resident, but he has done a great deal for our city. Erwin worked for OCSD, and then when he retired, he devoted all his knowledge and energy to watershed issues, particularly Newport Bay. There was never a meeting of the Newport Bay Executive Committee that Erwin didn't attend, always pleading for a more holistic approach. And I can remember him always saying, "Come on, guys, get it done before I die." And unfortunately, we didn't get all of it done, but the Bay will be stronger because of his efforts, particularly with the Newport Bay Conservancy. So we'll miss Erwin as well.
Thank you, Nancy. With that, we are adjourned.